Good evening. Welcome to the Southbridge School Committee meeting. Tonight is Tuesday, April 29th. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, global, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you very much. At this time, we'd like to ask if there's any public input for the school committee this evening? Is there anybody who would like to address the school committee this evening? Seeing none, I'm going to call the meeting to order at 7 o'clock PM. May I have a roll call vote, please? Have a roll call?
Mr. Olivo?
Present.
Mrs. Congdon?
Present.
Mrs. Donovan?
Present.
Mrs. Quinney?
Present.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Present.
Five present.
Thank you. Agenda item number five is the approval of minutes. We have two sets of minutes to approve this evening. The regular school committee minutes of April 8th, 2014. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Mrs. Congdon makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mrs. Quinney seconds the motion. Is there any discussion on the April 8th minutes? Can I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mr. Olivo?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Five yes.
Thank you. School Committee and Southbridge High School Student Council meeting minutes, April 16th, 2014. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Mrs. Congdon makes the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Donovan seconds it. Is there any discussion on these minutes? Mrs. Congdon?
I just wanted to explain what that meeting entailed. Myself, Mr. Olivo, and Mrs. Donovan met with members of the student council, selected members of the student council from different grades, and we held this meeting with them to just discuss various issues. The first item that we talked about was, we introduced everyone. The members of the school committee introduced themselves. Mr. Wallace was present, and we talked about the first item on the agenda being bringing back Pioneer Pride and what the student council has been working on this year. Ms. Brito mentioned what the student council had been doing. They were bringing back traditions. These events included Paint Night, Poster Night, and different school dances. The seniors that were graduating had requested holding the graduation ceremonies at McMahonfield, which had been a longstanding tradition. Ms. Erin Jovan, who was a member of the student council, spoke about the first winter carnival that was held in February. She said it was a great success, and she was hoping that this became a new tradition for the school. Mr. Olivo discussed his past high school experiences and suggested ways to infuse more school spirit, such as at different pep rallies, incorporating the Spirit Stick to the class with the most enthusiasm. Several of the students of the student council mentioned that they liked having the rallies, but they felt that that ended after football season, and school spirit should go throughout winter and spring and celebrate those sports as well. So that idea was well received. We also talked about possibly scheduling more night games so parents and community members could attend the athletic events. Mrs. McLaughlin had suggested not charging the students, to encourage students to support their peers. I inquired about how the student council this year was raising money to purchase a school mascot costume, and we talked about providing fan buses for away games. Mr. Wallace introduced, talking about the Southbridge Success Newsletter that they'd like to implement in the future, and we encouraged the student council members to submit publications to the Southbridge Evening News. We also talked to the students about the school handbook and policies and procedures, and asked for their opinion at the next meeting about any changes or things they liked, disliked regarding the student handbook. Our next meeting will be held in May with the student council, and we talked about in the future having the school committee meet with members of the Student Advisory Council and have them hold an election, electing the members of the Student Advisory Council to meet once a month or every other month with members of the school committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, can I have a roll call in those minutes?
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Abstain.
Mr. Olivo?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Four yes, one abstention.
Thank you. Under chair announcements, I have several this evening. First, I would like to say that I was fortunate enough, I believe every member of the school committee was fortunate enough to attend the United States Air Force concert, the Heritage of America concert that was held this past Saturday at Southbridge Middle High School. It was coordinated by Mr. Ted Bartlett, and I don't think the community can thank him enough for his efforts to bring this fantastic concert to the community. But there are some people specifically within the school department that I just want to take a moment to thank because their support was integral in making that event happen. First, I'd like to thank Mr. Michael Montigny of Southbridge Community Television, the channel. The concert was taped, and he is working to put it on cable access television in May. I'd also like to thank two gentlemen that helped with the cameras, and there are also cameramen here for us, Jacob Maldonado and Tom Io. In addition, I'd like to thank the following Southbridge Middle High School staff, if I could. Mrs. Kate Potter, Mr. Terry Wallace, Mr. Walter Solzak, Ms. Miriam Krantz, Mike Como, Kyle Graves, the Southbridge Middle School Band, specifically Ms. Emily Collins, Southbridge High School Band, and Dr. David Garcia, and then the band members who acted as ushers that evening. William Butler, Angelina Jansons, Erin Jovan, Taylor LaCanto, Joanne Marcano, Mackenzie McCure, Arielise Pagon, Mariana Valera, Conrad Wach, and Brittany Young. Thank you very much to everybody who participated that evening. As many of you know, there was a trip to Spain during April vacation. Some of our students were able to attend that trip. I received a memo from Mr. Matusko, from Senior Matusko, who took the students to Spain. He said that those students represented the town and the schools of Southbridge extremely well and very proudly. He said he received several compliments on their behavior, their interest levels, their maturity, despite being so far from home and despite their ages. So we're glad that everybody is back safe and sound, and wanted to again thank Mr. Matusko for undertaking that trip. Jacob Edwards Library will begin its centennial celebration. It's going to begin a year-long 100-year anniversary celebration. That's going to start May 1st on Thursday with a reception at the library from 4:00 to 6:00 PM for anybody who's interested in attending. I would like the public to know, because I have received a couple of inquiries this past week relative to two different things. McMahonfield was closed on Friday afternoon, and I received a couple of calls relative to that. I want everybody to know the reason the field was closed that day was due to pesticide and fertilizer application, so, and going forward, signs will be posted to alert the community to that. Another thing that I wanted to mention that happened very recently is I've received information that a couple of people, this isn't widespread, but apparently a couple of people have received phone calls, purportedly automated calls from the district relative to collecting urine samples, and I just want to let the public know that those did not come from the school department. Not everybody received them, but I wanted to let people know because we're trying to investigate that, the source of those calls, because apparently parents are saying it came from a school district number. So if anybody did receive any of those calls, has any information, if you could call the superintendent's office and report that, that would be helpful to us in that investigation. In addition, when you do receive an automated call, most people also receive a text message or email of the call. Those calls are pre-recorded and sent out at a certain time. So if you do receive a call, but you don't receive the text or the email that goes along with it, it may not be legit. I'm just saying, fair warning. So if you get a call that doesn't seem quite right, please let the superintendent's office know at 508-764-5415. And the last thing I wanted the public to know is, at a town council meeting a couple of weeks ago, there was discussion relative to public input at school committee meetings and whether or not our public input comments are recorded in our meeting minutes. They in fact are. We do our public input a little differently than the town council does. We accept public input before the meeting is called to order, and, but there are always comments and citizens that come up to speak are always noted in our meeting minutes, which are available for review, both on our website and in the superintendent's office. So thank you for that. I'm going to do a report of the representative of the Student Advisory Committee. Rosa, thank you.
Good evening. I have a few announcements from the high school. First of all, tomorrow, May, actually April 30th, is the Ryla Luncheon for the sophomores who will be participating in the Ryla program this summer. It is a great program, so I want to congratulate those students, first of all. I participated in it, and it was great. It was fabulous. I wish them the best. They're going to have a great, great experience, and they're going to get a lot out of it. Then Thursday, May 1st, La Wawa Movie Night will be held at the old high school auditorium on 25 Colab from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM. So please come and watch this movie. I went and watched it as well. It is hilarious. It is a great film, and you will get a very good educational...
Excuse me, your mic is not on. Is there any way to make sure her mic is turned on? I don't know if people can hear. Project, just...
Yeah. Good, project. Okay. I'm going to project into, don't worry. I can scream. Let's see. Does someone... Nope.
Go ahead, just...
Just, oh, it's back on.
You might want to start over.
Yeah, so I'm going to start over again. So tomorrow, April 30th, is the Ryla Luncheon for the sophomores who will be participating this summer. I want to congratulate those students. They're going to have a great experience. They're going to learn a lot out of this program, and they will meet with great people who they will make good friendship for many years. Thursday, May 1st, is La Wawa Movie Night in the old high school auditorium at 25 Colab from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Please come and watch this movie. It's only $3 for students, $5 for anyone else of the community that wants to come. It is a great movie. It has a lot of humor. You will learn a lot out of it, and it's just a great movie to have with the family. Then Friday, May 2nd, the high school choirs will be participating in the Great East Festival. We wish them the best of luck. They will be leaving at 10:00 AM, and they will be coming back at 9:30 PM. The reason for this is that after they participate, they will be going to Six Flags to have some fun after a long day of waiting, hearing other people sing, and feet hurting, and so on, so they will have some fun that day. Then Friday, May 2nd, oh yeah, also we have the Spira Movie Night from 2:30 PM to 6:00 PM. It's a double feature of Despicable Me 1 and 2. It's $3 in advance and $5 at the door. That goes for middle school students and high school students as well. These movies are the best movie that I have seen, the cartoon, so come watch them. I love Despicable Me 2. It's hilarious. Then May 3rd is SAT for the juniors to sign up for it. It is a long test, so I recommend everyone to go to bed at 7:00 PM that night so that they're very well rested, have a great breakfast, and cross your fingers, hope for the best, be relaxed, and just take that test, well, take it, because it matters when you apply to college. Then Thursday, May 8th, is Centango, and it's from 2:15 PM to 3:45 PM, and it will be at the SMHS Library. This is a form of art that is great to get a little bit of stress out, learn, have some fun. It's something to use your creative side and just draw it out on paper. So that will be at the middle, high school, high school library. So please come to that. Then also have some announcements for seniors. So the prom tickets will, the last day to be sold is Friday, so this is the last week to buy your prom tickets if you want to go. They're $65, and the prom will be May 23rd at Union Station from 6:30 PM to 11:00 PM. Village Photo will be doing pictures on it. If you're interested, there are packages that you can sign up for. Also, there will be on May 15th a pre-prom assembly, just to let the seniors know and the juniors as well, what they can do, what they can't do, the challenges, don't drink, so on, you know, what could happen. And also, the scholarships are still available for all those seniors that are going to college and need a little bit of financial aid. Please apply for them. They're there for a reason, and they're just great opportunities if you need some extra help. So apply for the scholarships. They're still available, and that's all we have for tonight. Actually, before I end, I just wanted to congratulate all the juniors because they have registered today for the SAT in June. So again, best of luck to them. It's long hours, so sleep, study, and do your best, and a bus will be provided for this, so do this. It'll be great. Thank you, and have a great evening.
Thank you, Rosa. I am going to move to Subcommittee, School Committee Reports, Agenda Item Number Eight. We're going to try and keep these brief so that we can get to the fun stuff, but Curriculum Subcommittee, Mrs. Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Curriculum Subcommittee met on Monday, April 14th. Present were Subcommittee Members, myself, Mrs. Congdon, and Mrs. Quinney. Also present was Mr. Aaron Osborne, our Director of Instruction, or Supervisor of Instruction, excuse me, as well as Lauren McLaughlin, parent, community member, and Mr. Brent Abrahamson, community member. First order of business was to accept our meeting minutes from the March 17th meeting. Second, we reviewed and discussed the draft curriculum proposal for our ELL program for the 2014-2015 school year. Mr. Osborne distributed a Southbridge Public Schools ELL Process Decision Goal Flow Chart to us. It's based on a template from Department of Education, but basically, it's a template that's going to, every time a new student enters our district, we'll look at a home language survey and then determine what the next course of action will be based on whether or not the student is proficient in the English language, and it kind of works its way through. So then after that, we looked and spoke about what a home language survey would look like. We also looked at a parent notification form. Once your child is identified, that you should enroll your child in this ELL program. We looked at what that notification form would look like, and we looked at what a sample placement form would look like for students who require English language services. We then looked at, looking at our own numbers, and we tried to determine how many hours of English ESL instruction a child would need, or sheltered English immersion a child would need, and some of their electives. We looked at our own existing numbers for all of our schools, grouped them into cohorts, which are just smaller groups. We found that because we have density challenges, which means that we don't have a lot of kids in the same grade level that need these services, we may have to group grades together, perhaps grades 1 through 3, or grades 4 and 5. Again, this is a proposal we're trying to work through on what would be the best thing, but at this point, that was something that came out of the meeting. From there, we looked at our other curriculums that we need to be created and/or aligned or realigned with our Common Core math standards. We know that we have our new AIP in place, that a lot of these curriculum initiatives are included in our AIP, so we want to look at them over the summer specifically in our English Language Arts and Math to tweak them and assure that they are properly aligned with the Common Core standards. We also know that our middle school is pretty solid because of our ANET testing, so that part is set pretty good, and most of all, we want to make sure that our curriculum maps are in place for both math and ELA. Then from there into the fall, our goal is to look at the Science and Social Studies curriculums. We know that in 8th grade, children take life science, so we're looking into perhaps moving biology into grade 9, so there would be a proper flow from, you know, in the sciences. And then the important thing is with curriculum mapping and writing some of these curriculums, we want our teachers, who actually teach these courses, to be as involved as they can in the process, so that's something we'll be reaching out to the teachers with. And finally, we looked at our accelerated program, our Advanced Placement Program, which currently is for grades K through 5, and the important thing that came out of that is we want to make sure that we define enrichment activities, not only for those classrooms, but for all of our classrooms. Our meeting adjourned at 7:45 PM, and our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, May 19th, at 6:30 PM in Room M100 at 25 Colab, and an agenda will be posted as that date gets closer. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Policy Subcommittee, I'm actually going to take one half of that Policy Subcommittee and then turn it over to Mrs. Quinney for the other half. This Policy Subcommittee met on Monday, April 14th. We discussed Section B of the policy manual. This has been an ongoing review this year, and we decided to suspend that and take up some other business. So two items that we did end up discussing at length, we're reviewing the school district handbook for the 2014-2015 school year. There is a district handbook that, and then there are individual school supplements. We're looking at the district handbook to make sure that with all the, with any policy changes that have come to be this year, that the district manual for next year mirrors those changes. We also began an extensive discussion of the District Crisis Manual. A review of that manual has not been done in quite some time, and so we're undertaking that as we go forward. And lastly, we discussed guidelines for presentations to the school committee. This was something that was recommended to us during the district governance workshop with the Mass Association of School Committees, and we have a vote on those guidelines later this evening. Just wanted to make you aware of that. Thank you, and I'll turn it over to Mrs. Quinney for wellness policy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Wellness Committee met the April, nope, March 26th. Our next meeting will be tomorrow night. Most recently, we have approved a youth risk behavior survey that's been forwarded on to the superintendent for approval, and parents of children in 7th through 10th grade be looking for information regarding that. It will be posted in a lot of different places, but that's something to be looking for in the near future, and I, we are continuing to draft a wellness policy. We'll continue that work tomorrow night, and we meet at 6:30 in M100. Again, and that's tomorrow, and that is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have anything to report for negotiations, Mrs. Quinney?
The Negotiation Subcommittee will be meeting with the Para and Tutor Union next Tuesday.
Thank you very much. For family and community engagement, I turn to Mrs. Congdon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our next meeting will be Monday, May 12th at 7:00 PM, and an agenda will be posted next week. Thank you.
Thank you. And a report of the SPED PAC liaison, Mrs. Quinney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The last SPED PAC meeting was April 17th. They met from 6:00 to 7:00, and then at 7:00, Anita Poolen presented the second in the four-part series on sensory integration. That was well attended by many. There was a lot of hands-on activities that took place, and that was well received by the community. The next meeting will be May 15th, and again, they'll meet in Room M100. From 6:00 to 7:00 will be a meeting, followed by, from 7:00 to 8:00, Anita will do the third of her four-part series on sensory integration. If any parents of children with 504 plans, IEPs, or anyone that has a vested interest in the special ed population and would like to see what's going on or get plugged in, please, I would encourage you to attend those meetings. The SPED PAC is also sponsoring a Spring Fling, and that'll be May 24th from 12:00 to 3:00, and that'll be at the old high school, and I think most of it will take place in the gym, or the cafeteria gym area. They're planning to have characters dressed up, and it's going to be a sensory experience. They're going to have different sensory stations for kids that can't typically participate to go, say, see the Easter Bunny, or get easily overwhelmed with large settings and lots of people and lots of noise, so it's going to be especially sensitive to children that have those sensory challenges and difficulties with that. And they'll, as I said, they'll have multiple stations where kids can kind of interact, and if they so choose, they can get their pictures taken with the variety of characters that will be present. And again, that's May 24th, which is a Saturday, from 12:00 to 3:00 at the old high school. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Quinney. Under Agenda Item Number Nine, we have some presentations this evening. First up will be the presentation of the Southbridge Middle High School, Middle School Cheerleaders, recognition of their performance in a recent athletic competition. I'm going to move the next two items on the agenda. After that, we will have the quarterly progress report of the Accelerated Improvement Plan from Dr. Bonda. Welcome, nice to see you. And then finally, the overview of the Southbridge Middle High School Athletics Program. But for the presentation for the cheerleaders, I'm going to ask Ms. Gardner and Mr. Wallace to join me at the podium. So this evening, we're very pleased to be joined by some students and their families. Thank you all very much for taking the time to come here. It's nice to be able to recognize our students for what they do, both in the classroom and outside the classroom, and that's the case this evening. So I just want to read a little something for the public's benefit, that on Saturday, March 22nd, Southbridge Middle High School Cheerleading Team brought home the first-place trophy as they competed at St. Anne's March Madness Winter Invitational. This was the first time in four years that the middle school cheerleading team has come home with a win, so that's just worthy of applause right there. This season, the middle school cheerleaders have been coached by Annalise Rozo, a first-year coach, so that's impressive in and of itself. I'm told that this team has been together, they're a very young team as far as being together since the end of December through March. The cheerleaders have been dedicated to practices every day, I'm told, 15 to 20 hours per week, along with keeping up with their academic studies. At their first competition this season, the team placed 7th at the Shepherd Hill Invitational, and at their second competition, they placed 3rd at the Southern Worcester County League. With, their season was supposed to be over in February. The Southbridge Middle School team was invited to the St. Anne's Invitational, which meant they extended their season for that purpose. With the support of their coach, Ms. Rozo, and the Athletic Director, Terry Wallace, the team was able to take on another competition to extend their season. All of their hard work paid off with a first-place trophy. They were only 13 points away from a perfect score, so Southbridge Middle High School cannot wait to see what their next season has in store for these fine students. So with that being said, I'd like to call the coach up. Annalise, can you come up with us? All right, so we're going to have Terry present the trophy. Do you want to? Okay, so we're going to start with the 8th graders. We have three 8th graders we'd like to recognize. We're going to call them up individually so they can come and get a picture. Julian Alvarado. Leilani Sintron. Is Leilani here? Teah's the captain of the 8th grade. Next, we have the 7th graders. We have another captain, Eliza Miranda. Dahlia Rodriguez. And our 6th graders, Alexa Rivera. And last but not least, Ms. Jenna Luke. I just wanted to say my apologies to Julian. It was listed that it was the girls' team, but clearly, it's a more inclusive group, so my apologies to you for that. It's the Southbridge Middle High School Cheerleading Team. Congratulations to everybody. And so now, you can all either stay with us and listen to the very exciting Quarterly Progress Report, or you can go home and celebrate. It's up to you. I'll give you a couple minutes to decide if you need to clear the room. Fun stuff, this Quarterly Progress Report. Fun stuff.
They can go home and study.
The what? Oh, yeah. Oh, that's right, too. Yeah. Yeah, that would've been good. Sorry.
And I hope next time you can bring in our search committee.
Yeah. Yes. That'd be good. You can talk about that, too. Are y'all ready? Okay. So this evening, as I said, we're pleased to be joined by Dr. Nadine Bonda, the Plan Manager from the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Dr. Bonda will be updating us on the Quarterly Progress Report of our Accelerated Improvement Plan. Welcome, Dr. Bonda. It's nice to see you.
Thank you. It's nice to see everyone. I thought everyone was here to hear the Quarterly Report.
I know.
Oh, well. Usually, I'm here much more often than this. As, as you know, I'm usually here four times a year. I haven't come for a bit of time because there hasn't been an accepted Accelerated Improvement Plan in the district until just recently. For those of you who aren't familiar with the Accelerated Improvement Plan, let me just take a minute to describe that. I know we have some new members of the Board, the Committee, and certainly, new people watching. Level 4 districts every year have to write what's called an Accelerated Improvement Plan. They identify three to four objectives that will drive their work in the district, and their effort, the primary, their primary effort is to work on those three or four objectives that the district recognizes are the most important ways for them to move student achievement. So although the district had submitted a few iterations of the Accelerated Improvement Plan for this year, in fact, started last summer, there was not one that was accepted until just recently. So this report will cover the first six months of the school district's work without an approved plan, and under the direction of Interim Superintendent Nebrekov. So during this time, as I said, there were several drafts that were submitted, and since there was not an accepted draft, this report is going to look at the three areas, the three objectives that were addressed in last year's plan, and proposed in some of the Accelerated Improvement submissions for this year. During this time, I, as Monitor, came out monthly and met with the Superintendent and the Interim Superintendent and the Assistant Superintendent, and discussed what was occurring in the district in terms of the efforts to move along student achievement. So the first six months of this year continued to be a period of reorganization for the school district. There were several new people who were hired in key positions. As the school district worked through the flux that it's now experiencing, it has continued to work in the areas of curriculum and instruction, using data to inform instruction and systems, and providing professional development at all levels. So those were the three areas that we continued to look at. There were three consulting companies working with the district and supporting this work this year: Focus on Results, Achievement Network, and Mileposts. There was also a new Plan Manager Team that was put into place within the last month or so. Two members of that team are here: Sally Dias. Where's Sally? You moved. And Ann Lane. There's a third member, Pat Jackman, who's not here this evening. Under, with their help, the new Accelerated Improvement Plan has been accepted for the rest of this year. There's still more work that needs to be done for it to be accepted for September, but there is a skeleton to work with for next year. So I'd like to give you a summary of the district activities in those three areas. The first is in curriculum and instruction, which is progressing, but there's still much work to be done in the district in order for the district to have a uniform curriculum throughout the district. At the middle school, Achievement Network, or as it's called, ANET, has been working to, with teachers, to align the curriculum with the Massachusetts Common Core standards. And this is primarily done in mathematics and English Language Arts at the middle school level. At the elementary level, some of the curriculum is aligned, but work will need to be continued to be done on this level. At the high school, curriculum is not yet aligned with the Common Core curriculum. As a side note, Massachusetts districts were expected to align their curriculum to the 2011 Massachusetts State Standards by the beginning of 2013-2014 school year. The new Supervisor of Instruction/ Director of Technology has been working with the high school math department on beginning the alignment on the Algebra I and the Geometry Courses. The Supervisor of Instruction/ Director of Technology has expressed his concern that there's not enough capacity in the district to complete this work in a timely manner. That's important for the school committee to know in terms of their allocation of budget resources for next year. Much work remains to be done in the area of curriculum alignment. The second area is data-driven culture. I'm happy to report that data is being collected in several areas. However, the district is just deciding on the extent of data to be collected, and how that data will be used to inform decision-making at all levels. So, for example, data's being collected, some data that's being collected is attendance data and suspension data at all levels, and it's being compared to last year's data. Although the Positive Behavior Intervention and Support Program, which is called PBIS, has been introduced to each building, there's yet to be a monthly dashboard built to allow collection and analysis of all aspects of behavior in each school and the district as a whole, and this is an area that we hope that the Superintendent will lead. DIBL's data is being collected, but again, it's not clear how this data is being used to drive change in student improvement in the district, and this is another area that we're hoping the Superintendent will lead. Mileposts has been hired to bring all of the district data together in one district dashboard so that all teachers and administrators can access it. However, this system is not yet operational. Achievement Network, or ANET, provides benchmark testing in grades 2 to 8. ANET analyzes the data, helps the schools to align curriculum, and works with teachers to help them understand how to incorporate results of that analysis in their teaching. This is an extremely important initiative in the district. The district is relying on outside organizations for this work, and we're hoping that at some point, the district can assume responsibility for this work itself. Walk-throughs and learning walks are being done to assess teaching in all classrooms. Some learning walks include teachers as well as administrators. And feedback is being given to teachers on four levels. The first is rigorous standards-based planning with written objectives and classroom activities that support them and reflect evidence. The second area of feedback is in terms of student engagement. The third area of feedback is in terms of multiple questioning strategies, and the fourth area of feedback is in terms of adjustments to practice using a variety of instructional strategies that ensure students are learning. The district has not yet assessed how the feedback is affecting student learning, and that will be a next step for the district. The third area is high-quality professional development. Professional development this year was taken over by district leaders, so in the past, there was a Professional Development Committee, but this year, it's been taken over by district leaders to better respond to what they see as professional development means in the district. Focus on Results is working in the district approximately one and a half days per month. A group of teachers is participating in research for better teaching training. The pupil personnel supervisor is providing training to staff at each building on how to work more effectively with special needs population. And the mentoring program is in the process of being redesigned to provide more intensive support for new teachers. So in summary, although there are certainly positive steps the school bridge, Southbridge, excuse me, school district is taking to reorganize the district, to put effective leaders and teachers in place, to provide professional development, to improve the skills of administrators and teachers, and to collect data to help inform them of the direction that they need to take, the district remains at the beginning of this work. Hiring high-quality, effective leaders who work collaboratively, who have successful turnaround experience, and who are committed to driving change, is important work that will be, need to be done this spring. An acceptable and strong Accelerated Improvement Plan that drives the work of the district will need to be the roadmap for the district. Once the Accelerated Improvement Plan is accepted for next year, the Superintendent will need to work diligently to ensure that everyone in the district understands the hard work that needs to be done and the urgency with which it needs to happen. The top central office administrators need to be visible every day in schools in order to drive the improvement in the district. So some next steps. Implement the Accelerated Improvement Plan that will drive the work of the district. Further develop an Accelerated Improvement Plan that will be accepted for next year. Develop a recruiting plan for teachers and administrators that casts a wide net to attract the most qualified people possible. This includes the next Superintendent of Schools. In terms of the next Superintendent, I want you to know that there's now support in the district from three Plan Managers that will help the new Superintendent. There's support from the DSAC, and there'll be coaching for the new Superintendent, from the new Superintendent's project that's done as a joint effort between Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents and the Department of Education. So there will be support and coaching, in terms of coaching and mentoring, for the new Superintendent. The district needs to complete curriculum alignment and development at all levels. The district needs to put in place a plan to effectively use the data that's being collected. The district needs to put in place a plan to provide professional development to every teacher in the district to raise their capacity in order to drive increased student achievement. The district needs to use the educator evaluation process and policy to give effective feedback and to help all personnel in the district grow, as well as to hold all personnel accountable for increasing student achievement. Because the issue of capacity in the district to affect the change that needs to be made has been raised by the Superintendent, the Director of Teaching and Learning, and the Supervisor of Instruction, a district plan should be developed that maximizes the use of the time of these people and all other administrators in the district. This quarter, because the district has not been operating with an improved Accelerated Improvement Plan since September, ratings for the initiatives are not provided as they are usually provided. Any questions?
Appreciate that. Does anybody have any questions for Dr. Bonda? Mrs. Congdon?
Through you, Madam Chair, to Dr. Bonda. What is the, what is the Plan Monitor do? What's like the job description of the Plan Monitor?
So I work for the Department of Education. I come to the district monthly, and we discuss, and they present evidence to me of what they have been doing in order to meet the goals of their Accelerated Improvement Plan. So the idea is that what gets monitored, gets done, and as I said earlier, the district is responsible for developing its own Accelerated Improvement Plan because it's the district that knows what has to be done in order to provide student achievement. The Monitor is the person who attracts that, the work that's done, and tracks, the, the district sets up benchmarks, and I ask for data to see if the district is meeting their own benchmarks.
Now, how many years have you been with us as Plan Monitor?
This is my third year.
Third year. And, just looking at this, just a correction. I don't think we hired a new principal at Eastford Road School. I saw that in the introduction of the report. It said a new principal was hired at Eastford Road School, but I don't think that's correct. I think we have an interim principal there.
And that, that maybe, I was under the impression that, from what I was told, that there was a new principal who was hired, but when these reports are written, and I do write the reports, they're then sent to the district for corrections. So, the, both the Superintendent and Assistant Superintendent have the opportunity to see the report and to make any factual corrections, so that apparently wasn't caught at that point. But I apologize for that.
That's okay. And I don't think we have an Assistant Superintendent either. That was just, we don't, I've never, um...
Oh, Director of, excuse me, Director...
We've never had that, so that was another concern. So that was another concern that I had regarding these issues. And you do come once a month, right?
I'm sorry?
You come once a month?
I come once a month, yes. I'm sorry, it's the Director of Instruction.
Teaching and Learning.
Is that, Ms. Gardner, is that your title?
Director of Teaching and Learning.
Director of Teaching and Learning. I'm sorry.
And just another question. So when you come once a month, do you help correct or do you just listen? Do you help implement like maybe SMART goals for the school district? Or do you, do you help guide them? Give them ideas?
I give them ideas. I ask questions. And we do work together to set some goals for the kinds of data that will be reported during the next month.
Just another recommendation that I was just, when I'm looking in the plan, we talked about ANET, and I don't know, recommendation to the state or even to the acting superintendent. I just think that we need to start informing parents how well their children do on these ANET tests. It's come to my attention that a lot of parents aren't aware of what their students are getting on the ANET. So I think that's another part of the data-driven culture that we need to kind of work on to make things clearer. But thank you very much for your time. That's all my questions.
Thank you. I could comment a little bit on what ANET is used for. So ANET is a diagnostic test that is used by the district in order to inform teachers about where they have to reteach areas. So it's a diagnostic test basically for teacher use.
So the parents shouldn't be aware?
Oh, I'm not saying that they shouldn't be aware, but that's something that you should discuss with your acting superintendent or interim superintendent, surely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions this side? This side, any questions? Mrs. Donovan?
Thank you. Nice to see you, Dr. Bonda. Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. One thing I wanted to just be enlightened with, because it's the first time I've heard about this. When you were talking about the PBIS system, and the last line of the paragraph that you referred to, you mentioned that there has yet to be a monthly dashboard built to allow collection and analysis of all aspects of behavior in each school and in the district as a whole. I'm not sure what the definition of a dashboard is and what is it supposed to look like.
So most superintendents will put in place what they call a dashboard, and it's a, oh, a method of displaying data that's collected in all areas. So the, each principal will be assigned certain data to look at during the month, and that will all be pulled together in one large chart. So when the district administrative, the district team, including principals and central office administrators, meet, they generally look at that dashboard. They can see where schools are progressing, where schools need more work. In this case, I talked about suspensions and attendance. They can keep track of attendance data, they can look at what's happening at each school, they can look at suspension data, they can look at dropout data, they can look at ANET testing. So it's a collection of, they might have information there from the monthly walkthroughs that they're doing. So it's a way to display all of the data that's being collected in the district so that it can be discussed and used effectively.
And what you're looking for in this particular one, is it strictly pertaining to PBIS? Or are you looking for every little piece of what we collect for data?
That was just one example. The PBIS would be one part of what's collected.
Okay, thank you. The other question I have, and maybe other people on the district leadership team and Ms. Gardner know the answer to this question, but, and a lot of this, I know, none of this is shocking or new to me, but what I get confused about is the approval and the acceptance of the accelerated improvement plan. We know that, we'll say within the last month, it was, a new one has been accepted. And by listening to you, I get the impression that that new accelerated improvement plan is only valid, so to speak, until the end of the school year, which is basically eight weeks away. And then, so therefore, we should have another AIP ready to roll for the following school year. So I just don't understand, like, how or when would a new AIP be submitted and approved so that we're ready to roll, say, in August? And what happens during these last eight weeks? And I'm not sure, does the AIP that was recently accepted, is it, does it only cover an eight-week window? Or what is the timeframe for our existing AIP to know when the next one should be submitted?
So generally, there are three submission dates that a district can choose from. So usually, there's a June submission date, July submission date, and August submission date. So the district can decide which of those dates they want to choose to submit their accelerated improvement plan. The idea is then it's ready to roll for September. The Southbridge plan was not accepted last summer when it was submitted. There were guidelines, there's always a letter that comes out to the district if the plan hasn't been accepted with suggestions of how to improve it and resubmission. When the Southbridge School District submitted its last AIP, which was accepted about a month ago, it was accepted for the rest of the year and as a framework for next year's accelerated improvement plan. There were a few areas that were asked to be strengthened. So once those areas are strengthened, then that plan will be accepted. So it's not a rewriting of the entire plan, but it is a closer look at some of the areas. And again, that information was provided to the district.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bonda.
Ms. Gardner?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It was my understanding that we were writing an 18-month plan?
And if you take a close look at the letter, the plan was accepted for, as was, for the rest of the school year, but there were some additional things that needed to be done for next year. So yes, the framework of the plan is accepted, but it needs a little bit more work in a few areas.
Okay. Because we had offered some of those additions as well recently.
I haven't seen them yet, but they may have gone to the Department of Education.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Quinney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to Dr. Bonda. Thank you for coming. I had another question, I think Mrs. Congdon asked, the role of the monitor. Can you explain the role of the plan manager?
Yes.
For the community?
Yes. So the Department of Education, in order to support the work that's going on in the district, provides a plan manager for each Level Four district. That plan manager initially, in year one, would probably write the accelerated improvement plan for the district with some input from the district, and then help the district to carry that out. As the years go on, the idea is that the plan manager will train and turn over more of that work to the district. So basically, teach the district how to write an accelerated improvement plan, what makes good benchmarks in an accelerated improvement plan, what makes good strategic initiatives, et cetera, so that the school district can take that work over eventually. At the beginning stages, the plan manager helps the district to organize the work of the improvement plan. And again, as the years go on, turn over more of that work to the district. So presently, there are three people who are helping do the work of the plan manager: Pat Jackman, who is working mostly at the high school, Sally Dias, who is working throughout the district, and Ann Lane, who is helping to coordinate all of the work.
Thank you. So you've been with us for three years. Is that when the AIP process started in our district?
Yes.
And how many plan managers have we had?
This is the third.
So at least one group per year?
Yes.
And that first year, was our AIP accepted?
Yes, it was.
In the initial year?
In the initial year, you had an AIP, that's right. You've had an accelerated improvement plan for the last two years.
And I know last year it was accepted late. In that first year, was it again accepted late?
I can't recall. I don't think you had one starting in September, but I'm not sure when it was accepted the first year.
I was, my recollection, which clearly could be wrong, was that first year we didn't quite get on the stick to get one done.
No, you did have one done, and I reported each quarter on it. I remember distinctly the first time that I reported there was an AIP in place, but there hadn't been much work that had done on it.
No data, that's what it was.
I'm sorry?
You had said we had one, but then there was no data to report on, is that what it was?
That's right.
Thank you. Going back to the process, you've said multiple times that it's the responsibility of the district to write their AIP because they know what's going on in the district.
That's right.
So where I get confused is if we have these people that are working within the district who know what's going on in the district, and address, can identify the needs of the district, write a plan based on that, and then send it to the state in August, and now it's April, what went wrong in that process?
So there are a series of letters that were written by the Department of Education that has come to, have come to the superintendent, and you can certainly ask for those to see exactly what the feedback was. In most cases, either the benchmarks were not rigorous enough, or the actions that were laid out to be taken were not considered to be robust enough to accomplish the three strategic objectives that the district wanted to accomplish. So it wasn't the objectives themselves, it was how they were going to be carried out.
All right. So those letters have come in, and then the district leadership team then sits with the plan manager, and then with you, and then, so they give you the data that they've collected towards those three key areas, and works with the manager to improve the plan, and then take into consideration these letters from the state? How many letters have we received?
I'm not sure. Ms. Gardner, do you? No, there are probably three or four letters that were received.
So I guess my question is, for that period of time, the district is supposed to have been taught how to kind of do this a little bit better and make the process easier. We've had a manager in place in four iterations we've gone through before we've gotten to the place where we have a mutually acceptable plan which with, to work from, and we've had kids sitting in classrooms for this period of time.
So there was a plan manager in place, which the district, the district is responsible for choosing their plan manager. And in the fall, the district decided to, to, to change plan managers. And it then took a bit of time for new plan manager to come on board, who was acceptable to the superintendent.
Thank you. I wanted to talk about the issue of capacity, which you've spoken about several times in your report, most pointedly in the next steps regarding, because, quoting, "Because the issue of capacity in the district to affect the change that needs to be made has been raised by the superintendent, the director of teaching and learning, and the supervisor of instruction slash director of technology." A district plan would be developed that maximizes the use of these three people and all other administrators in the district. I think, I find that a challenging step for the state to give the district as a district, given that I feel like this process of writing a plan takes those people away from building capacity within the district in order to support initiatives that are going on. I feel like the process, they're working for a process that just kind of seems to be a spinning wheel. And I haven't seen how this directly impacts kids in a classroom. I see a lot of plans, a lot of people coming in and out of the district, and a lot of work being put forward by people who do know the district well, to then have to continue to go through a process and a cycle. And like I said, if this plan was submitted in August, and we've had support for three years of a manager who has the capacity and the ability to help us write a plan, I think we're doing our district no service and the students in our district no service by continuing with a process that doesn't seem to have an endpoint that's going to impact kids for the long run. If this plan that has finally been accepted has only eight weeks, and then a framework to take us to the next, however long, how long, how many more iterations is it going to take with the support of the state? I feel like we're not truly, haven't been supported through this process in order to do what we need to do to impact the education of the students in our district. And I think this process, the way that it's played out in this district, has done nothing to build capacity and has kind of taken away that capacity.
I understand your frustration. When the superintendent decided to change plan managers, there was quite a bit of time when there was not a plan manager in the district to support the work of the district. When this team came on, probably a month and a half ago, I would say within a couple of weeks, there was a plan that was submitted and then accepted. So it was a matter of getting, I think, the right team of plan managers on board to support the work. And this work, the work is intended to drive, the plan is intended to drive the work of the district. And the plan manager's role is to support them getting that work done. So it's to support their ability to do that work. And then the Plan Monitor comes in and asks for data and collects data, and gives that information back to the superintendent and back to the school committee. So I'm a mirror for the, for the work that's being done here, basically. And, thank you. I'll just stop there. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. I just have one question and a comment. I too wanted to speak to the issue of capacity, if I may, for a minute, where it says the supervisor of instruction, director of technology has expressed his concern, there's not enough capacity in the district to complete this work in a timely manner. Do you know if that's in regard to people, programs, what kind of resources they're thinking we're deficient in as we are working on our budget?
So he was specifically talking there about the capacity to develop the curriculum that's needed in the district, both in terms of personnel who have expertise in that area and the number of people available to do it.
Okay. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
I think we are, I don't know if Ms. Gardner wants to make a comment, we're kind of at a disadvantage, where Buzz had done a lot of this heavy lifting and isn't here to provide some of these answers for us. So hopefully, the superintendent, when he returns, will be able to fill in some of those blanks.
If I might, thank you, Madam Chair. I believe one of Superintendent Nemirokov's, part of the plan to rewrite the improvement plan was that after the plan that had been in place last year, our MCAS took a sharp decline last year. And I think in revamping and with so many people, he did not feel that the plan that had been written reflected, I think, the new day in the spring, in Southbridge, as he calls it. And I think we did work diligently on it, and there was a lot of frustration around it. But I do agree with you that in the last couple of months, especially with, when Ann Lane came on board, we made great progress in it. And having Dr. Dias and having Pat Jackman has been excellent resources for us. And, you know, I didn't know if Ann, I don't want to put her on the spot, if she wanted to add anything, but, you know, we really feel like that we've now created a plan that does reflect what we do. And I do think that in the past, and I'm not trying to throw blame on anybody, but I think, you know, you always hate throwing anybody under the bus, but I don't think that in the previous plan, some of the data and some of the progress that had been stated within the district had really been made. And so we've taken a lot of this year to sort of survey exactly where we are, and I believe that moving forward, we're in a great place to do that. But I do appreciate the help, and I can honestly say that, you know, the day Ann Lane arrived, that was really when we felt like we were on board to making a plan that would be accepted.
And I'm glad to hear that because the team that you have has a great deal of experience and expertise in this area, and hopefully, they can be a great help to the district.
And two of those members are here. I don't know if you would like to speak, or?
Well, I, I would just, could you go to the, could you go to the mic? I'm sorry, I don't mean to put you on the spot.
So I'd make two quick comments. One to, to-
One to, to Ms. Quinley, Quinney. So I have been involved supporting all the plan managers across the state for the last three years, and so was somewhat involved in Southbridge a few years ago. So you had a good plan in place, and to Pat's comment, unfortunately, a lot of Level fours, Randolph, which is where I work a lot, also had what I think was a great plan, but we did not see the results we wanted last year. I think we think of accelerated plan, meaning immediately everybody's improved. So there's one thing about developing a plan that's solid, but there's another thing about implementing, and one of Southbridge's problems over the past few years for multiple reasons, is it wasn't the strong enough support for the implementation, the effective implementation of the plan. So the plan's only one piece of the hard work. What I helped the district put together now is to take the work that they had done and just make it tighter and clearer and much more aligned to what is, how it can support student learning immediately. So take all of the other things away, target this whole plan to being just focused on what is, what is in place to support students, and how we're going to measure it. So now the challenge is the implementation of that plan, which goes back to the capacity. Is that clear? So the plan we put together, what was wrong, not wrong, what was missing in the last plan that they struggled to put together, wasn't that they hadn't identified the right work, it just wasn't detailed enough and concrete enough to say, how are you going to make it happen? So you wish to improve instructional practices. What does it really take, this week, next week, the following month, and how will we know? So that level of detail was what was missing. Okay? Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any other questions, comments? Mr. Olivo?
Yes, I just have one question, and I'm trying, I'm new, so I'm trying to understand. Adding to what Ms. Quinney was saying, in, I guess, the plan was submitted in August and accepted in March, and per your comments, it was tidied up and accepted in March. Who determines a deadline for when it's resubmitted so that we don't have to wait that time to March?
Good point, the fact of the case. So technically, Pat was right, we were given the charge to write a plan that would last through June 2015. The challenge was that they wanted to get this plan approved for this year ASAP. So when the notes came back from the department, there were a couple of things we corrected, they wanted more explanation about for this year, and then they had a list of more deeper couple of questions for the following year. But they wanted to approve it, so they said, just do these two changes, and we can approve it for now. So it's minimal tweaking to, to the plan that will last through next year. And there, we don't have a set deadline. Our goal, I think, is to do it in July.
I, I think you were asking a little bit of a different question, too. I may have misinterpreted, but I think your question was, if it was originally submitted last September, could they have submitted iterations of it all along, or did they have to wait to a certain point?
Well, no, it was kind of both, and she did answer the question. It's just, it was submitted in August and accepted in March. And I guess the back and forth, I mean, we were operating without a plan from that time to March.
So you were operating, basically using the three strategic initiatives that were developed last year, but there wasn't a tight plan to support those. So there was a broad focus, but the details weren't there. When the department would give feedback, then as soon as the district was ready to resubmit, the district would accept it. They didn't have to wait until a certain time. So the district would accept it, review it, and then either accept or give feedback to it.
So starting this earlier would have the turnaround time so that we, I mean, I guess, better for next year, and have it ready for the start of the school year, is what I'm understanding.
Absolutely, and, and the framework has been accepted. So what is in place now will also be in place next year with some tightening in a couple of areas. So the plan does not have to be rewritten, there just has to be some things added in a, in a few areas.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Anybody else? Sally, did you, Mr. Estes, do you want to say anything?
I just thought I'd add a little bit about where we're going with this, and that actually tomorrow morning, we're meeting with Dr. Bonda, Ms. Gardner, myself, Mr. Jackman, to go over the AIP and present information and data that's been collected that supports much of what's in the plan over, that affected the last couple of months. And I have to say, I've been pretty impressed with the extensiveness of the information and data coming from the schools and the quality. That doesn't mean that there isn't, there isn't a distance to go, but there really is quite a bit of evidence that the district is moving along.
Thank you. Rosa? Oh, Ms. Rosa has a question for you.
Hi.
Hi.
So I really don't know much about this plan, or how this plan worked, or what's been going on around this plan and how it affects us. But I do know about the MCAS scores, and I do know about the student life in the school and so on. So someone brought up something about the MCAS scores, and about the plan, and about how it went low and so on. But from my point of view, not knowing about this plan, I just feel like the MCAS scores, you have to consider everything else that was going around in the school. Myself, I get affected by what goes on around me. I feel like everyone gets affected by what goes on around them. So at this point, we had the change in the math curriculum, we had the change in the teachers, we had the change in the school, we had all these changes. I myself ended up having a horrible year in the past time as well, so I must say, my scores went down, my grades went down, because of all the things that were affecting me, not just a plan. So it just throws me off that people are considering, talking about this plan, and how this plan affected, and how things went down, how things went up, but they're not considering things that were going around the students, around the teachers, around the people involved. Because sincerely, how I said, I don't know about this plan, but this plan didn't affect me. What did affect me was the teachers, the changes, what was going on, what was coming in and out. So not, not that this plan is not important, it's just, how, are you guys considering how this plan is affected by everything else that goes in the school? Because there's a lot of things that go on that affect that grade, there's a lot of things that go on that affect the student, and there's a lot of things that needs to be considered in this plan as well that affect the students, and how that could correlate, how that works together. Because we can't blame everything on a plan, and we can't blame everything on a person. We must put everything together to point fingers at something or someone or what's going on.
That's, that's an extremely, extremely good point, and very well thought out point. Thank you. And there has been a lot of change in the district, and that was something that I mentioned in my report. And we're hoping that some of those things will stabilize a little bit as the plan is, is put together. But it's important that there's, that there's a focus in the district, and it's important that the, the leaders of the district, and all of the teachers of the district, and even all of the students of the district, understand the three or four things that are most important to work for in the district. And those are the things that have been identified in this plan, where the district leaders feel that if these three areas are worked on and worked on well, if there's improvement in those three areas, that the whole school district will improve, including student scores, and that there won't be as much change or as much flux in the district. So that's an excellent point.
Just wanted to stable that, because I personally was affected by all the changes, and I was just thrown off, I was listening to what everyone was saying, and I was like, but wait, no one is considering everything else that happened. It's like, the district is on the outside, this is how I picture it. I picture us, the students, then I picture school committee, then I picture district. I see people coming in and out of the school, but they come in once a week, once a month, once a year, they're not there with us every single day, they're not there with us every single period, they're not there with us every single minute that we're in school. So they might take out one point while I'm taking out everything else that comes in. And there's a lot of things that affect and so on, and I just feel like sometimes there's a little points that are missing, they take out a few things that aren't correct, or take out things that are correct. And it's just something that we must consider, because a plan is a plan, but a plan cannot work if everything's not working together. You can make a plan, you can make a plan B, plan A, plan C, we can make twenty million plans, but if not everyone is working, not everything is working around it to make this plan work, there's nothing at the end.
That's, that's right, Rosa, and things can be working well at the high school and not working well at the preschool, or vice versa, so it's important that data be collected from all sources in the district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions?
Can I just...
Sure.
...say my last comment on this? Thank you, that was very articulate and very well said, and several weeks ago now, we had Senator Moore who came and spoke to our students, and one of, something that was very touching for me was the number of principals that, you know, your class, for instance, has had, and, you know, I, I wasn't here, but I apologize for that. I mean, it's very unsettling to go through, and I think that we have an opportunity now, which I'll talk about in a minute, to hire administrators who want to be here, and we have some who want to be here. I mean, Mr. Wallace isn't going anywhere, Mr. Kukase, Ms. Potter, aren't going anywhere, and we're looking to do that. And in this plan, and you're right, you haven't heard about it, and we're going to roll it out, actually, as soon as, you know, we're ready to do it, so you are going to hear about it, but we want that to stop. I mean, this is a place that I want to be. And I think, you know, I was talking to somebody the other day, I think that, you know, in a way, Southbridge has been waiting for the right person to come and, and fix it, but I think the right people are here now, and, you know, so I hope you will stick with us in the future, because I, we're going to change it. But I think it's, you know, those of you who have stuck with us that have made it possible to get here, so I thank you.
Let me just say one more thing that goes with that. I was talking with Mr. Wallace three weeks ago, a month ago or so, we had a little meeting with four seniors, Mr. Wallace, and we're talking about how you can succeed no matter where you are at. There's no reason why you cannot be successful, there's no reason why you can't do something. And yes, a lot of things that go on in the last four years, I can, I am evidence of that, I was there for all four years, but especially in my class, we have sticked together, we have worked together, and we come from Southbridge, I came from Southbridge, second grade, second grade, third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, sixth grade, and there's no reason to blame things on other people. I am going to a great college, many of the students in my class are going to a great college, and we come from Southbridge. We're proud to come from Southbridge, we have the grades, we have the scholarships, we have everything else any other school has. And maybe we have been waiting for the right person, or maybe we already have the right person, but it all comes from hard work and everyone working themselves. So maybe things will change, I am leaving this year, so maybe I won't see the changes, but we all have to commit, we all have to commit, we all have to work, and each person is individual, so they choose if they want to be successful or if they don't. So that's just, thank you.
Thank you, Rosa.
Think you could end the meeting at that note?
She does me proud, and she's going to my alma mater, I just learned that tonight, so, she's always made us proud, Rosa keeps it real, I like to say. Thank you, Rosa. Thank you, Dr. Bonda.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that. And next on the agenda is agenda item number ten, there is no report of the finance director this evening, we'll move on to report... Oh, I'm sorry, Terry, I'm so sorry. Got a little carried away. Before we get to that, our final presentation this evening is an overview of the athletics program. Mr. Terry Wallace is with us this evening, he's the acting principal of Southbridge High School, and also the athletic director of Southbridge Middle High School. Thank you, Terry, sorry.
No problem, I, I don't mind being overlooked like that, no, just kidding. First, first comment I want to make, and I'm very pleased to be here tonight to talk to the school committee and everyone else in the public, and talk about Southbridge and Southwest Athletics, and where I think we're going to be going, and, and the vision and goals, how to get there. But first comment about someone, Rosa, I have to comment on you, you know, I've talked to you a bunch of times, and it just makes me smile, because, you know, I talk about the word can't, and it can't be part of the vocabulary, and we had some nice discussions about things, and my prediction for you is you're going to go far in life, because you have the right attitude, and I love the fact that you can come back down the road as a successful young woman and say, to kids, address kids, and say, I'm a Southbridge kid, a Southbridge student. There is no excuses, you know, you, you get what you put into things, and like I said, I think you're going to go very far, very, very well, say what you did. Before I get to my presentation, just a couple of things that I want to talk about, little snapshots that I've seen here at Southbridge that have made me very happy, and they're, they're kind of all non-related. Two of them I witnessed, and one was, I was part of one. So I'll start with the one that I was part of. Just as a point of introduction, I will be talking tonight about we and I, and that will be my connection to the last sixteen years, I was the head football coach of Shrewsbury High School. So some of the ideas and ideals that I bring up today have been proven, situations that I've had in the past, which I think can be distributed in Southbridge and be successful. First area I want to talk about was during a pep rally, which was alluded to earlier by Mrs. Cognon and Mr. Olivo at this meeting. So I had a pep rally, it's homecoming, and so I get up in front of the kids, and I tell them a little story about, two weeks prior to the David Prowdy game, which was the homecoming game, we had an opportunity to play St. John's of Shrewsbury, which is our rival, and we happened to beat St. John's on the last play of the game, twenty-three to twenty-two by blocking a field goal. And I explained to the students that after the game, we had eight hundred students from Shrewsbury running onto the field. And I said, tonight, after we beat David Prowdy, let's revisit a situation like that, and doesn't the game go to double overtime, and doesn't Southbridge win? And as I'm coming home from my game, don't I get a video from Mr. Kukase of kids running on the football field afterward they had won? So that was something that was, that was really nice to see, kids celebrate that, you know, supporting each other as peers. Next scenario that I want to talk about was a girls' tennis match. Now, I got to be honest with you, the last time I saw a girls' tennis match was thirty-four years ago, I was dating a girl in high school who was number two on Darty High School, so I haven't seen one in thirty-four years. Right now, presently, going into tonight's match, which they're probably freezing right now, they're four and two. We had a doubles team, with two seniors, Elise and Kayla, that won the doubles tournament, the Swickle Tennis Double Tournament this past weekend. But here was my take from that. They were playing North High, and the girls were showing the utmost sportsmanship, and when you see my presentation, you'll know why this is important to me. Both teams, actually, North High was doing the same, and the girls were purely enjoying themselves every second they were on the court. And that's part of athletics, not only being successful, but actually enjoying what you do. And I couldn't have been more proud to be from Southbridge than that, but matter of fact, I went up to the North High coach and complimented his girls. And Mrs. Gilbert, who's the girls' tennis coach, I said, wow, I said, this is really a nice situation that you've had, you know, been a real good role model as a coach, and watching kids not only succeed, but purely enjoy playing and enjoy the fact that they're playing, you know, with each other as teammates. Great story. The last one is my favorite for this year. On a February wintery evening, snow everywhere, ice everywhere, our girls' basketball team is about to play Burncoat High School from Worcester. It was senior night, senior night was originally scheduled prior to my becoming the athletic director, the same night as the last boys' basketball game. In my opinion, when it's a senior night, you should honor the team involved. So I changed that, the boys had their night for senior night, and I changed the girls to their last home game. What I saw was something that was amazing, here are two teams basically not going any further than this last game. They're not going to the districts. You had two coaches on both ends coaching up a storm, you had girls diving on the floor, both teams. You had the crowd going crazy, both teams. And we ended up winning the game, forty-two to thirty-six, and after the game was the nicest thing at all, it was senior night. These seniors, who hadn't had the best season, but wins and losses, were purely, again, happy to share in that moment. And I said to the girls after the game, you know what, no one's going to remember your senior year, your record, you're going to remember your last game together. Pictures, everything, parents, it was just a great scene. My point of these little snapshots is to say, regardless of the opinions of other people, there is wonderful things happening at this high school, all the time, every day. And it's going to be our goal that we make school committee meetings even longer, because we want to celebrate a lot of these successes, hopefully in athletics in the future. So getting to my presentation, if I can do this, we'll see how it goes. So my vision and goals. My first one is to provide students, athletes with a positive, enriching experience through middle and high school athletics, and I'll get to that in a second, what I mean by that. My second goal is to increase student participation in athletics. I have talked about that very much, and I have a plan with that also. To increase support and attendance at athletic events. To increase support and attendance at athletic events. School committee people have brought up some ideas about this, and I really like those, and I have a few too. We'll talk about this in a second also. And then to foster competitive teams. That's a very important thing. So here we go. To provide student athletes with a positive, enriching experience through middle and high school athletics. What does that mean in English? That means when people play sports, they actually enjoy what they're doing. That's what that means. I didn't say winning, I didn't say losing. I said they enjoy what they're doing. They enjoy the experience, they enjoy the fact they're playing with their teammates, their classmates, and they're representing a town and a school. That's what that means to me. Encouraging all students with an athletic interest to try out for a team. Now, just examine that real quickly. I was very fortunate to be pretty successful coaching high school football, and I will tell you right now that if I had my choice between the most talented kid in the room and the kid that's gonna give me everything he has, I will take the kid who gives me everything he has a hundred percent of the time. Now, that sounds crazy to some people. But you never know with kids. Sometimes kids will play sports just because they wanna be part of being with their friends, but they may end up a really good athlete, and they may not be a good athlete. And to me, that doesn't matter. What matters to me is they get the experience. I had people come up in football. I used to have a night before the Thanksgiving gate, and people would reflect. And I had senior athletes say to me, and say to their classmates, "I played because I wanted to be with my friends. I wasn't the best player, but I got...I'm so happy I played football." That's the mantra we have to have at Southbridge. It doesn't have to be about championships and wins and losses. It has to be about the experience. How are we getting that to our kids? Hiring coaches who help athletes learn the fundamentals of the game and improve the level of performance. I must tell you that through my experience, you know, the coach's biggest critic is themselves, and I agree with that. But I must tell you, and I want the district to feel very confident, through my lens as coaching, I see things a little bit differently because I've walked in their shoes. So my goal is to make sure that we hire coaches who actually know what they're doing, similar to the education realm. You know, if you're a principal of a school, you're in hiring process, you want to hire teachers that know what they're doing. Well, it's the same thing when it comes to coaching with our kids. Providing all athletes with proper equipment and athletic attire. One of those things is a real stickler to me. You know, my feeling is this, if you're a Southbridge middle school athlete, you should look the same as anyone else that we play, regardless if you're playing boys' tennis, football, golf, it does not matter. And I'm very proud to say that we have eight spring teams going. We had eight scheduled to play, they're all fielded. And if you watch our teams, they go out on the field, they look like teams, and that's very, very important. And proper equipment, obviously, from safety. You know, you have to make sure that the kids have the proper equipment, so we try to provide a safe environment for them to participate in. Celebrating participation in athletics and the success of team and individual achievement. Notice how I wrote that. Celebrating participation in athletics is not talking about success. That's the second thing we talk about. And the last thing we talk about is individual achievement, because individual achievement is important, however, you can see the order of how I wrote that, and I did that on purpose. Ensuring that participation on schools' teams is meaningful and fun. I want kids to walk away from the experience at Southbridge saying, "You know what? I was so glad I played whatever sport I played, and I got something out of it." You should see a kid who comes into our program as a freshman and leaves as a senior and say, "Look how this person has grown." And coaches should be able to say, "You know what? Maybe I had a little bit of piece of that." That's important. So that's how I think about provide student athletes the positive enriching through middle and high school athletics. This is a big one to me. We don't have the biggest school, okay? And my goal is to make athletics in this school, with the help of everyone else, very exciting to be part of. And hopefully that we have some students that obviously are gonna stay, that live in Southbridge, and we have some other students maybe who left for whatever reason to come back because of the success and the way we do things. Also, I must tell you, just from being in sports my whole life, usually if a student plays one sport, they're gonna be good in another sport because they're competitive. I can take someone who has nothing, knows nothing about soccer, who was a basketball player, and just say, "Listen, I want you to try your best," and they're gonna learn and probably help a team very much. So we gotta get people to play multiple sports. Timely signups prior to a particular sport beginning. One nice story, so spring trials came, and all I heard, oh, well, you know, we only had twelve kids on the varsity baseball team. We didn't have this, we didn't have that. And I just kind of scoffed at the notion. Pumped kids up, I got coaches involved that were excited about things, and we went from sixty participants to a hundred and eighty in one year. Three times the number. We were fielding, like I said, eight teams. That's pretty impressive. But that all became because we had timely signups, we did it right, kids were excited, and we had a lot of kids sign up. Enthusiastic coaches for bone athletics. There's no one in this room, in this world, that can tell me, "If you're not enthusiastic about stuff, the kids won't respond," because they will, and adults will respond too. They will. You gotta be excited about what you do. If you're just here to collect a paycheck as a coach, I gotta be honest with you, if I'm the Athletic Director, you're not gonna be working here. I don't have time for that. It's a disservice to our kids. I mean, I used to joke, when I looked at my hourly thing, I think I made thirty-nine cents an hour as a coach because of all the time you put in. My wife would verify that for you. Believe me. Here's the big one. Encourage student athletes to play multiple sports. To echo on this too, and I know this is athletics, but to encourage kids to do multiple activities. If you're in the band, play a sport. If you're in a sport, you know, sing in a chorus, or be in the band, or be in the play, be in the musical, be part of stuff. That makes people extraordinary. Just these one thing, "Oh, I'm just gonna specialize in a sport," or whatever, it's ridiculous. It's just...I look at LeBron James, I tell the story about LeBron James. LeBron James is an all-state football player before he became the best player in the NBA. So that's number two. To increase support and attendance at athletic events. And I had some help with this, and it's a really good help, and I thought it was a great idea. So, some of the ideas. We have morning announcements at school. We talk about games, we talk about results, we celebrate results. We've really done a really, really a lot better job with that going forward. Because it's important. Kids like to be...listen, I gotta tell you, if I'm participating in a sport and we did it, we did well, I want to hear about it. See, your kids can talk, your friends can talk about it. Schedules posted on the school website. I'll tell you, this has been here my first year as an A.D., and, you know, I can't control the weather and have revised the schedule a hundred times. I just did it for the last time. You gotta understand that some days when it rains, I gotta reschedule eight games. Not a lot of fun. But I think it's up on the website as we speak, so, you know, I try to revise it as soon as I hear, I have it. So that's nice to know, so people can know when games are. Weekly all calls and emails. That was something that I started when I became the Acting Principal. I've had a lot of positive feedback about that. I think the emails, you know, I'm a guy, if I see in the email when a schedule is, that's what I go by, and, you know, sometimes they're a little lengthy, and I apologize for that, but it's a lot of events that we talk about. Students with school ID admitted to games for free. I had this notion, and it was echoed by some of the school committee members, I think it's very important. Here's what I think about that. Yes, you'd like to have a lot of money into the athletic program, I get that. But to me, I'd rather build on school support. And the other double whammy with this is student accountability. We talk all the time about kids having their IDs, so make, if you want to be admitted to the games free, you need to show us your school ID. And then when opponents come in, we charge them double. No, just kidding. But I think that's important. You know, one of our things that we hang our hat on is, you know, be safe, be respectful, be responsible. That's being responsible. So that's what we're gonna do. This was another home run to me. So I'm gonna talk after about community service, because I think that's important when it comes to sports. But I think one of the things, I think we have a lot of senior citizens, you know, we're out in 132 Torrey Road, and sometimes it's hard to get to, but the football games are at McMahon, which is easy to get to. So what I'm committed to is we're gonna reach out to the senior citizens and also offer a situation, if you're interested in getting a season pass to admit you to games, I'm gonna make special passes for senior citizens. We're gonna go to the senior centers to help them and also have them the opportunity to come to high school, so they'll be able to come to games free to support our students, which a lot of adults, I'm sure they do. I gotta tell you, see, I'm from Worcester, and Southbridge, I don't understand some of this stuff. Southbridge, when we talked Southbridge back then, all I talked about was if you had to play Southbridge, you were in for a war. Hard-working kids, you know? And it's, it can happen again. It can happen again. You know, we heard about leadership and having the right people. It can happen. Just a quick snapshot, when I went to, before I went to Shrewsbury, true story, people said, "Don't go there, they can't win." They hadn't had a winning season in twelve years. I was at Auburn at the time. As people know Auburn, they've had an unbelievable program. I could have been the head football coach at Auburn, but I wanted to have my own program. And the second year, we went ten and one, a team that could never win. So again, you know, Rosa, you're right on the money. It's not about, you know, the past, it's what you think you can do in the future. Foster competitive teams, so, so important. You know, I went to the Swickle banquet with a lot of people that I know because of my experience in Shrewsbury, and a lot of comments were, "What are you doing at Southbridge? I see umpires. What are you doing here?" And I kind of smiled, and I kind of said, "We'll see a year from now." But that's one of the goals. Competitive teams means that we have opportunities to compete against our opponents. Not talking about wins, I'm talking about opportunities to compete with our opponents. Hire skilled and committed coaches, real big. So far in the process, I have interviewed every single coach that is coaching right now, and I'm gonna do that going forward too. My feeling on this is I'm gonna be held accountable for the athletics in Southbridge. I want to make darn sure that the coaches know what I expect as far as expectations and commitments. Provide coaches with support and training. That's an easy one. I'm never gonna be in a game and tell coaches what to do, that's not my job. However, if you talk to the spring coaches, and you talk to some of the basketball coaches too, what I can do is support them and help them and mentor them in situations that come up as a coach. And I've done that very much so far in the spring, and I think the feedback, and you can talk to the coaches, and I think it's been very positive. I think the kids also see that too. See, if you're an Athletic Director of a school and you're sitting back and watching things happen, you're missing the boat. I'm not the kind of guy to watch things happen. So I'm a very hands-on guy as far as that. Now I'll continue. Making school-based athletics our priority. I remember a hundred years ago when, you know, I was back and I didn't look like this and I was a pretty good athlete, and, you know, would play for the school, I played for Little League. I used to have like four uniforms in my mother's car all the time, because I didn't know what team I'm playing for. But my father always said to me, "Regardless of what team you're playing for, the school is the top priority," and I believe that. And that's a core value. And, you know, this town, this school, whatever like that, we need kids to get to feel like that. There's other good things out there, there's a lot of good other programs outside, but I'm thinking when you're committed to a school team, that's gonna be your number-one priority as far as athletics during that season. Team member retention for four years. See, that's another thing. If you have a, and I'm gonna talk about programs compared to teams in a few seconds, but when you have members stay for four years, you should see growth going forward as far as a lot of things, and we'll talk about the growth. But you have a much more, much more better success, will be competitive against anybody when you have kids. Because think about it, when you come into the program as a freshman, compared to when you're a senior, the game slows down for you. And if you're taught the proper way, you will see, excuse me, progress along the way. So those are some of the ideas for...and then competitive athletes play multiple sports. Again, show me a kid that shows competition and a will to compete and to show effort, and I'll take them every time, over someone who has maybe the most potential, the most talent, who won't put the effort in. So those are things, how you foster competitive teams. Expectation for coaches. Again, reference to myself. Had a really nice moment back in November, and one of the reasons that I ended up retiring from Shrewsbury was this. I had the opportunity to go to Shrewsbury Hall of Fame, and I had five of my former players getting inducted, which was kind of a nice thing, on the same night. One of my players, Chris Lynch, who ended up going to WPI, real smart kid, and was a captain for WPI. So this is twelve years ago that he played for me. He got up and quoted things that I told him twelve years ago that he uses in his life today. And I looked at my wife and said, "You know what? What else I gotta do here?" So I guess when you make impressions like that, it's pretty good. Family-school-sport. Here's what I mean by that. When you're playing sports, regardless of things like that, your family should be number one. So if you have a family obligation, such as a wedding, or, you know, unfortunately if you have a death in the family, or something family, religion, whatever like that, that will never be held against you when you're playing a sport, because family's gotta be one. Followed by number two. We are student-athletes. We are not kids that go to school to play sports. No, we are student-athletes. You have to live that every day. So again, we have to support that by, if kids have work to do, if kids have to make up work, if kids are falling behind in their classes, and we need coaches to be aware of that, they need to concentrate on school before they go. And then quite frankly, if you're playing on a high school level, and say, for example, you're playing girls' soccer, and that's not your third priority as far as family and school, you probably shouldn't play, only because it's too much time, too much of a sacrifice. So that's a hierarchy that I'm gonna still starting in the fall of 2014 throughout as the umbrella under athletics. I think it's important, and it's certainly worked. Developing student-athletes. I don't know, maybe I'm not the smartest guy in the world, but I like people who are smart, who can think on their feet and everything like that. So a lot of times when you deal with kids who do very well in the classroom, they're competitive in the classroom, they're certainly gonna carry that on to the athletic fields or courts. And that's what I'm talking about, student-athletes. Making sure the kids know the focus is being a student always at first. Being a student is what you need to do. Being an athlete is a privilege. Positive attitude all the time. People, I mean, Rosa will tell you, I mean, I don't know what negativity is. I just, I don't have time for it. And it's funny how, if you show a little belief in people and kids, and show some hope, how amazing things can happen. And so again, done of the days, "Oh, poor pitiful us." No, we can't handle that. Positive attitude all the time, not only with the coaches, but also exhibiting that to the players. Here we go. So I have, when I became the A.D. February 1st, I had a meeting February 5th. And, you know, there was only a couple of games left in basketball, but I thought it would be important to kind of set the tone with the other coaches. And so I sat in a meeting, and I went over some things, and I said to the coaches, "I expect three things as a coach at Southbridge Middle High School." The first thing is ethics. Ethics means a lot of things to me, but ethics means doing the things right in front of kids. So the number-one thing that comes to mind to me is profanity. No place for it as a coach. How can you expect kids to do the right thing if you're not doing the right thing? You gotta be a role model. Okay, you can't be screaming and yelling at referees, you can't be screaming and yelling at opponents, you can't be screaming and yelling at your players. Ethics.[1584.61] Ethics. Carry yourself in the right way. Very, very important to me for being a coach. Number two is effort. I should, I should have wrote a thesis paper on this. Effort is the only thing in life you can control. This roof caves in right now, there's nothing we can do about that. But effort is what you can control. Going back to my point about taking a hard-working kid, I'll take them all day. And, and the thing that I always try to talk about, even when kids had MCAS, I said, make sure you can show yourself in the mirror, look at your face, and say this question to you. Can I do any more? If the answer is no, you're good. If the answer is yes, then you're not trying hard enough. So effort is, is something. So, so effort to me also is if you go to a baseball game, and in between innings, you should see kids running off the field and running onto the field. Same thing in football, soccer, what have you. It just looks so poor the other way. And the last thing was improvement. Let's be honest, I mean, getting the spectrum of education, when you start a team, your team should improve and your individual players should improve. If you do that, you've done well as a coach. And I had a couple of coaches raise their hand, well, wait a minute, you're not, you're not talking about wins and losses. I go, no, I'm not, am I? If you do those three things and, and carry those other three things that's a top, they'll take care of themselves. This is a big one, folks. Okay, I'm not interested in baseball teams and soccer teams or whatever like that. I'm, I'm, I'm here to try to develop an athletic program. And there's a big difference. Teams come and go, programs will sustain themselves and continue to, to, you know, grow and be successful. And we talk in this district about stability, well, this is part of this. Athletic director interviews all coaches. It's going to happen, I don't care if you've been coaching 25 years here, I'm going to interview everybody. And, and to be honest with you, if you've been coaching for 25 years here and I don't think you're the right fit for kids, I'm going to say, listen, you know, you're not a bad person, but I can't have you coach. I'm sorry. I can't do that. And if you're a good coach, you can coach forever. So the head varsity coaches, I've, I've talked about the umbrella effect to them, not to bore you with that, but they're responsible for all coaches at the level of their sport, consistent team rules, policies, and practice plans. Again, you've got to prepare your coaches, if you're, if you're a head coach, on, on the sub varsity in, in, you know, the middle school level. Okay, this isn't the first season we've had that. This, this directive will get a lot better going forward. I can promise you that. If you're a sub varsity coach, JV, middle school, the expectations are very simple. All athletes have playing time. Okay, now, I know coaches are competitive, I get that, but you know what? On that level, it's more important to me to make sure that every single person plays. The only time a player shouldn't play is if something happened as a consequence. Other than that, they should be playing. And if they're not playing, that, that's going to be a problem for me. Priorities, teaching fundamentals of sports and a positive experience. Again, that word positive again. If I'm a freshman and I go out for a team and I have a good experience, chances are I'm probably going to come out the next year. Whereas if I don't have a good experience, chances are I may not come out the next year. And we need all the participation we can get. Player development improvement. That comes down to coaching. And that'll be part of my process mentoring the coaches, making sure that we develop our players to be the very best they can be. And improvement we talked about. And here it is, folks. You know, you got to have, we got to have pride come back here. And it's here. You know, this is not like, this is not like a town or a school that's never had it before because you did. So we got to work on that. We got to make sure the kids are happy about what they're playing. Coaches want to be here, and, you know, us as a school, us as a town, we get behind our sport teams. Look at that, wow. Ideas going forward. Very, very happy to say that I, I talked to Buzz before, he, he went out on sick leave, and I had two young ladies from the junior class come up to me and say, Mr. Wallace, we'd love to start a volleyball program. So I wanted to see what the interest was, so I had them go around and take a survey. We had 51 girls be interested in volleyball. So my, my idea is there's a lot of teams in a swivel that does not have volleyball. So maybe that's something that we can have that other schools can't have. And to me, I have seen girls volleyball games, it's awesome. Our football team used to come after practice if we weren't playing earth like that and sit and watch the girls volleyball team. And then, you know, developing intramural program because you probably only have 15 to 18 girls in a varsity team, if you want to have other girls involved. Spring track. Again, we had spring track in the buzzer in 2014, but it wasn't set up to the way that I was comfortable going forward, and you'll find I'm not going to do anything halfway. I just refuse to do it. So spring track will definitely come back in, in 2015. My idea for this is, you know, with budgets being as they may, there are going to be some situations where you need to raise some money for our athletic program, and I have a, a major idea for a huge fundraiser to involve all the athletes starting out the school year, which all the money will go back into the program to support all the sports. Okay, here's a big one. 16 years ago, I wasn't an administrator. I became an administrator three years into my coaching career, but I came up with an idea thinking that, here I am, a freshman, I come out for summer, and again, from the, from the lens of a football player, and I play my freshman games on Monday, and then I got to go to two and a half hour practice on Tuesday and go home and do homework? Not happening. So I said, you know what, it's better for me to have the kids sacrifice a practice and have them do their homework in the afternoon when they're a little banged up and everything like that. And I told, I prefaced by telling parents, if your kid comes home on a Tuesday night and says they don't have homework, they probably don't. And the coaches monitored that, and amazingly so, in my 16 years at Shrewsbury High School, not one freshman football player flunked out in the first quarter. Proven, proven idea. Bring it back to past. Okay, so a couple of ideas here. I'm a big traditional guy and, and things, so things that I think about is I want to, I want to recognize individuals and sports teams that have had success in Southbridge in the past. For example, at half times of basketball games, or football games, or, you know, things like that. The other thing I want to do with bringing back the past, I think about basketball, having like a doubleheader back at a 25 Colav. Have the whole town come, put flyers up, you know, play, play a rival, and have the place rocking. That's what you want to see. Kids remember that. Kids remember, do you remember the game we played spotlight and it would seem like there was 10,000 people there? That's what they remember. So those are some of the ideas about bringing back the past. Maybe have some of the kids who were like what Rosa talked about, they were Southbridge kids who had success, maybe have them come back and talk to our students and our athletes. I put this on here just as information. We have several night games coming up. And so May 5th, May 10th, and May 19th, you can see on two of the nights, the 5th and the 19th is a triple header. So that's someone, if you wanted to come out and support our kids, you could see a baseball and softball game and girls tennis all within a half an hour timeframe. So those, and then we have a Saturday night game against Tantaskor on the 10th. So I thought that was important going forward, just showing those up. And then again, to the, to the public, come out and support our kids, they really deserve it. And then I'm open for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Levo.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. Thank you, Mr. Wallace, for coming out, and this presentation I think was well put together. Thank you. I have a couple of questions. Sixth grade, eighth graders, this is middle school, and we do have a middle high school.
Right.
Moving forward in the years to come, what is going to be, and are there any ideas for programs put in place to keep these sixth graders and eighth graders separate from varsity teams?
Yes, I, I think one of, one of the issues that came up this year, again, no malice of anyone, was we had a indoor track team in the winter that went from six to 12. And I am not a big proponent of mixing sixth graders and seniors. We had two strong coaches, but it just, to me, that's too much of a, a grade gap. So going forward, what I would like to do is get it to the point where we can have our sixth, seventh, and eighth graders just be part of our middle school experience. If you had someone extraordinary in the eighth grade, I don't want to hold kids back, but have the eighth grade be a cutoff as far as going forward, like, you know, with JV's varsity. And, because that's what most successful schools do. You know, you don't see a lot of seventh graders playing on successful teams.
Right.
And, and the other selfish reason for that is getting a culture with some of these middle school kids, maybe they can develop a, a sense of togetherness and, and pride and stuff like that, and, and go forward and have some success with that, would build it forward going to their high school years. So I, I'm not a big proponent of mixing. I think we do a nice job as far as offering middle school sports. I mean, right now, we have soccer, and we have basketball, and we have baseball. That's a heck of a lot more than most districts offer for the middle schools. So I think that one of the, the areas that I am concerned about is the, the track area where we don't offer middle school, but I just think that's too much of a jump, in my opinion, for a sixth or seventh grader.
Absolutely. I think that moving forward, I, I agree. I just think the maturity level of the sixth through the eighth graders to play on a varsity team at that level is just not there. Maybe not for everybody, there might be one or two exceptions to that. But I think it is important to be able to separate middle school so that they do have that experience, and so that the high school also is not, so that there's, to prevent issues with, with students.
Agreed, agreed, Mr. Levo. But not only that, even from a, I'm a big safety guy, from a safety standpoint of view, you're talking about having 12-year-olds possibly compete with 18-year-olds, and it just doesn't make a lot of sense, you know, from that aspect. And also, from trying to provide the culture going forward, I think it's important to kind of separate that whenever possible. So what I'm going to do as far as the athletic program, take a look at all those things and make sure that, you know, I feel comfortable along with other people as far as the competition level, and trying to keep kids age-specific as close to possible as many times as we can.
Now, I am also a big supporter of, of the increase to students attending athletic My only concern with that is, is will there be any rules pushed out to the students of the high school as to how they're supposed to act at these schools, so that, or at these events, so that we don't have any issues or any problems? I mean, they do carry, and when they're wearing their ID, it is school pride, and it could be great and it could be bad.
Well, I'm, I'm of the idea it's going to be good. And I think what you have to do is you have to actually talk to the kids about it. Because if, if you're asking kids to do something that you haven't prepared them to do, then you're setting up for, for failure, in my opinion. So I think you model how you're supposed to act at athletic events, similar to how you model how you're supposed to act at assemblies. And I think we've done a pretty good job with that. And I think the behavior at basketball games, I know that when I was there at home games, really improved. And that was because we had people out talking to the kids. And they would say, well, what about these guys doing something over to the other school? We're not concerned with the other school, we're worried about Southbridge. And I think the behavior really got pretty good. Football-wise, we'll have to, you know, monitor that and model that in the fall. But I think it's very important. You want, you want, the best thing you can get from a school leadership person or in the district is get compliments about your kids' behavior at a place when they're not in a school setting.
Absolutely, I agree. Just a couple more questions. You did state that the coaches will be responsible for developing student athletes and ensuring that they, that they are students before they're athletes. What is the idea and how will it be measured for to make sure the student athletes' grades are up to par?
It's a great question. Again, my, my vision going forward, starting in the fall of 2014, is part of your responsibility as a coach is making sure that you're reaching out to teachers to monitor a couple of things. First of all, monitoring academic success, which is the number one thing, and also making sure that you are a sound-acting Southbridge student, you know, in order to participate in athletics. Because my opinion that athletics is a privilege. And I would say to any kid who's not behaving in school, how can we trust you to go to somewhere, some another school and behave? And, and the other thing is, when you're part of a team, you know, there, there are rules and standards to, to go by, and you need to follow those. And I, I have said this to nauseam with, with kids. When kids question something like that, and I always say something like this, just like every other kid is supposed to do. So we can't have kids who are playing sports think that they can do other things and get away with it. I think, you know, some of the scuttlebutt in the past has been they've been able to do that, that's going to stop. That's going to stop.
And one more thing.
Sure.
Glory days, I've heard of them, I've seen them in the halls, and I absolutely love it. I know, and I've heard from many people in this town what this school used to be. And, and, and I'm 100% for bringing that back. I do have an idea to assist in that maybe, and alumni versus seniors games.
Love it.
And I know that when I played, we did have those games versus the uncles or whatnot of our, in baseball and in football. It wasn't tackle football, but it was flag.
I could get loose.
Either way.
I don't know if I could go to school the next day, but I could maybe throw a little bit still.
Either way, I think it was great for pride, I think it was great for those guys who, who are alumnus of the school, and, and a great program for the student athletes as well.
Yeah, there's, there's many ways you can go with that. You can go with alumna, you can also go from the previous senior class or something, but those are great ideas. And those are things that kids look forward to. And also kids that will bring people from the public in to watch. Because they want to see like so-and-so who graduated five years ago, who was this and was that, what do they look like now? You know? But those are really good ideas. And I think anything that promotes athletics in a positive way for our kids is, is a home run. So that's great ideas.
Awesome, thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Levo. Mrs. Condon.
Through you, Madam Chair. To Mr. Wallace, thank you for organizing, bring, you know, it was a great presentation, and reorganizing the athletics program, and for all of your hard work this year, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I had a couple of questions. The first question being, how's the status of the athletic fields at the middle school, high school now? I know some, some games were played, some games weren't, soccer, just a question on that.
It's a great question. Well, first of all, our facilities, our basketball facility is top-notch. I mean, you can't get any better than that. So that's, that's a really good, I've, I've heard visiting teams come in and say, wow, what a place, you know, and we're going to make it even better. We're going to get some of the banners from Colav and get them over there. As far as the fields in the spring, there was an issue with the newer fields in the high school. I, I walked up there a couple of weeks ago, and, and it was like walking in quicksand. But, you know, Mike Coman and his staff did a great job, and as of last Friday, they were playable. So now, going forward, any varsity games that we have are going to be playing on the new high school fields. But here's the, here's the added little thing that I add to this too. Not only the varsity is going to play there, but the JV is going to play there. Not only the JV is going to play there, but the middle school kids are going to play there too. So if I'm a middle school kid and I'm playing on a varsity field and I'm looking around, this is great, this is probably going to have kids, you know, and I think it's important to promote that. We have a great facility there, and so why don't, why don't let, you know, because I get people, oh, where are we going to play, you know, West Street? No, you're going to play at that field when it's available. And if you, if the new high school field's not available for the middle school, once McMahon gets fixed, they're going to play at McMahon Field. They're going to play at the best fields that we have available, all levels of our kids. I think that's important.
Thank you. My next question, seeing it's budget season, do all of the teams right now have acceptable uniforms and equipment, or what would the need be for that?
That's another great question. Well, one of my things, I spoke to a few school, school committee members, is my goal is to make sure that we start from the practice. And I don't know if anyone's ever played sports in the world, the worst thing in my opinion is those smelly pennies that, you know, they, whatever, you can wash them 100 times and they're still smelly. So what my thing is, I want to make sure that every Southbridge athlete has a reversible practice jersey. And this helps from the coaching aspect, I'll explain what I mean. So you get a red and white, say, Southbridge Girls Soccer jersey, and then you flip it over and it's white and red. So if I'm a coach and I want to do a small group drill, I say, you three girls be red, you three girls be white, bam, and you're off to practice. You don't have to grab pennies or anything like that. And for durability, I mean, the pennies just, they, they don't last, and, and the reversible jerseys, you know, and basketball's another really good sport, they have, football's a great sport, you go offensive, defensive, have different colors. I just, and the other thing with pride, I want these kids to feel, you know, like they're athletes. I, I, I got feedback from people thinking that, oh, you know, some teams still have Wells on it and stuff. No, no, can't have that. I don't care if you're playing the middle school or you're playing the varsity, whatever you have, whatever you wear is either going to say Southbridge, or it's going to say Pioneers, because that's who we are. So as far as that going forward, at the, the end of baseball season, Coach Carmelison and myself, we want to do a total inventory of everything, and we're going to see if, if teams need stuff. I, I, again, proof in the pudding, if you talk to the spring coaches about anything they need, they're going to say they don't need anything. Every single kid, right now in our program, in a baseball and softball program from middle school to varsity, has an undershirt that's white and red, every single kid. Every single kid has a, a, a new uniform or reasonably new uniform. Every single kid has equipment that they need. From middle school, middle school needed a catcher's helmet, we got it the next day. So we're, we're showing people that, you know, we, we're serious about making sure they have a great opportunity to do that, but that's important as far as making sure we have that. So again, the answer is, I don't know exactly with the other sports, but I will know by June.
Perfect, thank you. I know you touched upon it, but the training expectations of coaches.
Right.
And I'm not sure about concussion training and, and does every coach have to be trained on that concussion?
They do. And, and how that works is, just so, so we'll know going forward, starting with the fall, what I'm going to do is I'm going to have seasonal presentations, not only for the coaches, but for the parents, because in the concussion training, not only are the coaches supposed to be trained, but also the parents and the players are supposed to know about it also, the protocols. Because concussions is a major topic nowadays. So envision this, in the fall, I'll, I'll have, you know, soccer, field hockey, football, cross-country, we'll have a meeting, and this meeting will, will be a presentation by myself about the athletic program, the expectations and things like that. And then we'll go over the concussion situation, it's a short test that you have to take. And then after that, we'll have small breakout groups by sport, specific with their coaches, We'll talk to parents about what their expectation's gonna be, what their practice plans are. And if parents have questions, that's a time they can do so. So the concussion, we have to have that. The other thing that I'm gonna require down the road is I want our coaches to be certified from the MIAA with coaches' education. I think it's important. It's a $95 cost that I think it's something that once you have, you can have it forever. I mean, I was grandfathered in, but I did it back 100 years ago, it seems. But I think that's important, so you can show a district that your coaches are certified through the MIAA and up to date on all the trainings they need to be. Because safety's the number one thing. And I mean, and I want to keep talking about, but with the concussion thing too, again, we don't have an athletic trainer in the district. So I will talk, especially with contact sports, about the policies about that. You're always gonna side on the side of caution. And then there's a policy as far as the athlete returning to competitive activities, they have to go through.
And my last question, and this might be a long-range goal, but in the future, collaborating and forming partnerships with community athletic programs such as like summer camps to the youth. I know in the past, a while back, maybe in the 80s, there used to be a tennis camp with Mr. Kane, who used to be the tennis coach at the high school. And he did a camp for the younger kids. And I remember like Wally Gosc basketball camp. Just in the future, I didn't know if we could start kind of collaborating with either maybe the YMCA who does some programs or summer camps, just to kind of keep these programs growing by the time the kids get into middle school and high school, that they kind of have the basics.
I'm a big proponent in anything like that. And I will commit to the fact that I talk to people about shaking the trees. And shaking the trees means is I'm gonna get out in the public and see if people can help us as far as that. I mean, one of the areas that we certainly need support is with scoreboards. We have fields that don't have scoreboards. You know, it's something that we need to address. And that might be something that we can get sponsorship for. Because that's a high-end, you know, end item for a budget that probably won't be able to take. But a lot of schools, they have someone who will sponsor the business. Because I think, again, image, you know, you go to a field, you want to have a scoreboard, you want to look nice. But I think it's a home run with the camps. And I have had camps in the past, and summer camps, and they work out really well. Plus, in my opinion, you know, it keeps kids engaged, so they can't get into other mischief if they have to. You know, and the summer's a scary time as you're an educator, because it's unstructured time for your kids. So, and I think it would really help. The other thing too, I probably want to say, we need to start a softball program here in Southbridge. And we're complaining against teams that have softball. And some of our girls coming to our softball program are playing for the first time. It's a really unfair advantage. And again, if you're someone in the public that would like to take the lead on that, I'd gladly help coordinate that. Because that's something we certainly need from the public, helping our school sports in that particular sport.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Congdon. I'm gonna look to my right now. Is there anybody on this side? Mrs. Donovan?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. Thank you, Mr. Wallace. I enjoyed your presentation very much. I like your philosophy.
Thank you.
I think that you, what I love the best is the expectations of your coaches and your accountability of your coaches. And I think that you're absolutely right, that if they set the standard, then the kids are automatically gonna fall into line. And the program itself will fall into line and things will, it'll just be a natural progression towards what exactly what we're trying to do here is create sustainable programs that our kids can be proud of, that can keep our kids here, and that the community itself can be proud of. So I like your idea of going back to the past. However, I think in order to do that, we have to look ahead into the future.
Exactly.
So thank you for everything that you've done. I know one of the greatest things that you informed me of early on in the year that I think had never been done was just an agenda for your coaches and meeting with your coaches. And that's, it seems extremely basic, but that's what it takes. So I appreciate you taking the time to get us started and get us on that right track. And I wish us all the best in our athletic endeavors. I was curious as to your relation with the Pioneer Athletic Booster Association. And how is that a helpful organization for you? And is there a way that that is bringing in or outreach to either more people in the community or to the parents themselves of the athletes?
I'm so glad you asked that, because I was gonna bring it up at the end. Just a little history with me. I think that's so important when you're having the athletic experience, getting parental involvement. Of course, it's important in the educational process too. Back when I, my second year in Shrewsbury, I started a club. It was called the Gridiron Club. And it started small, like it was 15 or 20 parents. By the time I was there, my third year, there was 120 parents involved. And that fostered into the hoopsters in basketball, then I went to dugout to baseball, there was a lacrosse one, and there was a soccer one. So I would gladly have that going forward. I know how to do that. I've written, you know, the bylaws of that. I've had experience doing that. And it just promotes positive spirit with people. You know, you get together once every couple of weeks or something like that. And then all you're talking about is how can we make the experience better for our kids playing sports? And that's all the agenda is. It's not about how my kid should be playing. No, it's not about that. I had a situation, I had the president of the Gridiron Club that I had to bench his senior year because he didn't do what I asked him to do. And it just the way it was. So as far as political, I didn't care. You know, it was the same for everybody. But that is something, as far as the booster club, I have talked a little bit about that. It's something I really want to go going forward, have them, have a lot of input in things. And I'd really like to crank it up in the district to have parents involved in that, because I think it's important. You know, a lot of us parents want our best for our kids. What better way to support them in the athletic spectrum as far as that? And again, what I used to say was, it doesn't cost any money, just sacrifice your time.
Absolutely.
You know, I think it's a good use of time, in my opinion, that if we can make... And it was amazing how it just morphed. I mean, it went from football to basketball to baseball. And I helped all the sports, you know, start it out. And I would do that here for sure. And I think it's very important. I think boosters is something, as far as the fundraise, I want to make sure that they're on board with that, they want to help out with that. And I think a lot of plans going forward, I want to include them and get, you know, really have it publicized. And again, you know, you don't have to be a parent of a student at Southbridge Middle High School to be part of a booster club.
Right.
You could be just someone that's interested in, you know, Southbridge athletics. And that would be great. We welcome people like that too.
Right.
But again, we need help as far as the public. We gotta stop this negative mantra of things, okay? I mean, I believe a lot in you're either part of the problem or part of the solution. We all gotta be part of the solution. This is this town, it's a proud town, and we gotta start making it a proud town. We gotta start with us in the school, and it's gotta just go out like this. And we gotta have people support our athletics, and we gotta have people say positive things about it. Because there are tons of positive things happening, and we're gonna start celebrating. That Southbridge newsletter, Southbridge Success that I've talked about, is going out next week. And it's gonna be something to see. And I'm gonna be really proud of that, and it's gonna just be, you're just gonna read it, and you're gonna keep smiling every time you look at something. Because it's all gonna be talking about the great things that the kids do at Southbridge.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Another quick question.
Sure.
You mentioned sponsorship for your scoreboards. I think one of the greatest things that's lacking in some of our new fields is a place to sit.
That's true. Agreed.
You know, way back in the day when we had the new bleachers installed at McManfield, we were given the impression that those were transferable, that at some point, when the new school was built, that they could be taken down and moved up there. I didn't know if that's something you had looked into, or if you were aware of that, or if there was any way that, as you're looking through sponsorship, to see if there's better ways to accommodate both home and away... What's the homecoming? What's the name of the team? The away team and the home team? Families or, I can't think of the word. You know what I'm trying to say? The fans.
I do know what you're saying.
Yeah.
I think with McMahon, I think it has such history, and there are football games there. I think my idea quickly would be just to keep that the way it is. And maybe look to see if we could add bleachers at the new field at some point, or some type of seating arrangement. Because that's true. I was at the doubleheader on Friday, and there's, I mean, there's a small little bleacher area on one side of the field, on the softball side. So unless you brought a chair, you're standing and watching the game. And that's not something that you, you know, you want to do necessarily. So I think that's something going forward. Now that I know the landscape of things, like I said, when I first came in, my fall, you know, I was concentrating on being the assistant principal, and also I had obligations outside of school, being a football coach at Shrewsbury. So from that time, from August to November, I really wasn't involved as much in the sports, you know?
Right.
But now that I am, I think that's a viable point. We gotta try to get some more bleachers or some type of seating arrangements, so we can support attendance. Because we're talking about having people come to our games, you want them to be able to come and enjoy themselves and sit there. So that's a very good point.
Okay. Thank you. I'm all set. Thank you once again, Mr. Wallace.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Quinney.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you to Mr. Wallace. Thank you very much for your presentation. I could talk a lot about those bleachers, Mrs. Donovan, but I won't do that tonight. You said that you're gonna be doing an inventory of the equipment, the uniforms and that such. Would then you place a rotating schedule so that certain, every, so many years, every sport got a new uniform or equipment as an easier to plan budget process?
Yes, that's exactly what the process that would be. And again, I don't know where it all stands right now, but I will find out and exactly how that would be on a rotating basis. Because if you're talking about having equitable, you know, participation and stuff like that, that's how you have to have it. You can't just have one sport get uniforms every five years, and then the other sport don't wait 10. So that would be on a yearly thing. And as part of the budget presentation, I would say that this year, we need to get soccer new uniforms. Let's say, for example, for a boys and girls soccer team. And then next year, we'll need, you know, baseball, whatever it is, and basketball. But you'll know ahead of time as far as that, and there will be a rotation. My goal is, when you're looking at it, depending on the budget, you'd like to have uniforms kind of change, you know, within five or six years at the very most, when possible. But my goal is, I'm never gonna have, even from middle school to varsity, ever have something that I don't deem, you know, presentable to people in a uniform, regardless of the sport. I just don't, I don't think it's the right image. And if you're trying to promote a program, there's no place for that. So yes, that'll happen. And again, I don't know the answers as far as where we are in the uniforms, but I will find out.
Thank you. You talked about, Matt, you've interviewed coaches, and you said that you want higher skilled coaches.
Right.
What skills does a skilled coaches have, and what qualifications do you see as being a necessity?
That's a great question. I guess when you talk about a skilled coach, it's kind of a fluid answer. You can go a lot of different ways. I'm gonna give you my lens of what I'm looking for as a skilled coach. The first thing that I talk to coaches about is safety. We gotta make sure that our kids are safe at all times. And that means being organized and having practice plans in place. And that sounds kind of interesting, but to me, say, for example, you're having a baseball practice, and you don't coordinate where people are, then all of a sudden, a kid get hit by a ball. And you can't have that. Same thing in football, you know, type of thing like that. So organization, practice plans, and the other thing that you gotta, you gotta hire someone is, you know, I talk about being positive and doing the right things. And the toughest thing sometimes as a coach that you have to learn, and I've learned this, you know, through my experience, is everyone wants to win. There's no question about it. But you gotta do things the right way. And that's why ethics was number one in my coaching agenda. You can't have that. You can't have, you cannot go from there. And you also gotta remember this. When you're in a competitive activity, these kids are 14 through 18 years old. And if you watch a pro event, people make mistakes. So you have to understand that. You know, kids aren't trying to make mistakes. You gotta do that. You gotta be a role model. You gotta be involved in kids in offseason. Very important. You don't want coaches, football, hey, listen, I'll see you next August. No, it's no good. I'm very proud to say our football team, we got 25 to 30 kids lifting every Monday, Wednesday, Friday. The schools, you know, my school was tough to get that, and we had a lot more enrollment than that. So that's something positive about coaches like that. You gotta have rules and procedures, and you gotta enforce them. And I'll tell you a quick story about enforcing rules. Back in 2007, we had a wonderful year. We ended up being 13-0. My starting quarterback had a little situation. I'll tell you what happened. He was a great kid. So my rule was five o'clock meeting before a game. And five o'clock is five o'clock. So most of my kids came in at 4:40, 4:45. This kid showed up at 5:01, and I benched him, my starting quarterback on an undefeated team. And he was going crazy. I said, Coach, I got relatives coming. I said, the bottom line is, look, it's for everybody. It's easy to bench your third string nose guard compared to your starting quarterback. But the message was sent, and no one was ever late again. So if you're gonna have rules and procedures, you gotta follow some. And the other thing too is, you gotta develop, instill confidence in kids. And what I like to talk about, something that I'm very proud of, we've won a lot of close games under my watch, is poise under pressure. In other words, you gotta take, you gotta take the pressure away from kids. And how do you do that? You'd be very well prepared. And I was able to talk to in front of my team and say, you know what, gentlemen? I don't know the talent of this other team, but we're not gonna be out coached tonight. And I want that to be the standard here at Southbridge. If you can prepare kids that you're not gonna be out coached, you may have teams that have more talent, and you're gonna show the maximum effort here, it's gonna be a great experience for everybody.
Excellent. Thank you. Mrs. Congdon had asked about concussion training. Are there other trainings that we require of our coaches, CPR, first aid, that sort of thing?
Yeah, that's something that I think as a district, we should look at and try to implement, especially if we don't have an athletic trainer. You know, that's something I think going forward that will be on a list of trying to do. Again, I think with the coaches' education, the concussion training, and if you add the CPR, first aid, you're pretty well trained as a coach in case something happens.
And is that part of the MIAA certification, or is that just on coaching?
No, the coaches' education's more like with coaching things. The CPR and first aid is something in addition to that.
And do we currently have certified coaches in the district?
Certified.
That are MIAA certified?
I went on, matter of fact, I went on the website before I came here, and I didn't see... I saw a couple basketball coaches, but I didn't see a lot of names. But that doesn't mean they're not certified. Because I think the year was before, just don't quote me, I think it was like 2001. If you were a coach prior to that, you were grandfathered in, if you took it prior to that. I know I was one of those guys, so my name wasn't on the list, but I am a certified person. So I have to call the MIAA. I actually called an A.D. and asked, and he said to call the MIAA to find out. So what I'm gonna do is compile a list of who is certified and who is not certified. And the people who are not certified, I'm gonna have them be certified by the next sports season.
Excellent. Thank you. What sports do we currently offer at Southbridge Middle High School?
Okay, currently, we'll go for the spring. Right now, I'm pleased to say, we have baseball, we have a varsity baseball team, a JV baseball team, and a middle school baseball team. And that doesn't happen very much in this district. And that's my goal, to keep that forward. Same thing in softball, which is unheard of. We have three-level softball, and then we have boys and girls varsity tennis. So we offer eight teams in our athletic program in the spring, which I think is pretty impressive. In the fall, we have middle school soccer on the boys and girls level. We have cross-country on the boys and girls on the high school level. We have varsity football, we have JV football, and we have freshman football. We have girls soccer, boys soccer, and field hockey. And the proposal is to put girls volleyball in there. That's a pretty nice athletic program, all those sports. And then the spring, we have basketball, varsity, JVs, and freshmen on both levels, which is very impressive. We have a middle school team in basketball, and we'll have a spring track team in 2015 also.
And now you had said that there's no, we have a winter track team? So we had winter track, and then there's no spring track because it wasn't shaping up the way that you wanted it to?
I didn't have the coaches that I wanted to have in place, and I wasn't willing to do that and put something out that I wasn't comfortable with, and I won't. So that was the real reason.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
The other question.
Sure.
People in the community have articulated that we have really good feeder programs as far as a youth soccer program in town that's very robust and has laid the foundation for a lot. The same thing with baseball as well as football. And then the question then becomes, we have these stellar undefeated teams and programs in place, and then we get to the high school, there tend to be a lot more challenges in building a team and a program. Do...
Lot of factors to that. I'll talk to my expertise, Pop Warner football. And Southbridge has a great history of Pop Warner football. However, Pop Warner in football means everyone's the same weight. It's unrealistic when it comes to the high school level. You, all your kids are 145 pounds in Pop Warner, and you go play varsity, and a kid who's 145 is playing against a kid 240. That's one of the reasons. The soccer program, I must tell you, I'm very, very impressed. I was able to go to a meeting in March. It's very well-run. I saw a lot of our students participating in that. I'm gonna reach out on that level and possibly look at hiring some of those coaches because of selfish reasons. First of all, I was very impressed when I talked to those people. And also, that I think it's good that coaches will know some of the kids that are already playing. You know, the football thing, so soccer, I went to that. I spoke at a Pop Warner banquet publicly. I will speak at anything that has to do with kids in Southbridge at any time to support anything. And as far as field hockey, the problem with field hockey is there isn't really a feeder system, which is kind of challenging. So soccer's there, football's there, baseball's there, but softball, we have nothing. And we need it. Because again, you know, when you're going against, say, a team, Tantascwood, like they're going against tonight, and you have kids that have been playing softball since they were eight or nine years old, and we have a kid who's a junior who's never played before, but is a good athlete, I mean, that's a serious disadvantage.
I'm sorry, one last thing, just thinking about safety. Do we currently have teams that participate in captains' practices in this district?
Captains' practices. Is that what you said?
Yes, captains.
Okay. So let me explain what captain's practice is, so people will know what that is.
Yep.
Captain's practice is practices that students can have unsupervised by their coaches.
Right.
So that's what they are.
All right.
Okay. So the only exception to that is if you go to a camp... Let's say, again, I use football. I ran an inter-high football campus, 400 kids there. And I brought 60 kids from Shrewsbury, 70 kids from Shrewsbury. So as long as the participation is in 50%, you can be part of that as coaches. Captain's practice is something that kids do on their own time to get ready for their sport. It should never be supervised by coaches, because that's illegal offseason. And if it's happening, I will stop it. It can't happen.
It can't happen that a coach would supervise a captain's practice?
Coaches who coach the sport cannot supervise captain's practice.
However, you would be okay with a group of unsupervised people playing football without an adult present?
Football with pads? Or I don't, I can't stop kids from going to play football. I can't stop kids from going to play anything. So, you know, unsupervised, I don't know what you mean by that.
You just said that a captain's practice was a practice that was unsupervised by a coach.
Correct. That kids get together, like say, for example, I use myself as an example. We had captain's practice in Shrewsbury. We had football players, okay? They would go, they would go practice on their own. I mean, I don't understand what...
My concern is liability and injury. We're saying that we want athletic trainers, and we want people to be able to keep kids safe, and safety's our number one priority.
Right.
It's concerning that as a district and as an athletic director, you would say, that you were comfortable with that. That makes me very uncomfortable to know that that would be okay, that there was a group of students playing on a field that the district would be liable for if anyone was injured.
How would they be liable?
Those...
They would not be liable.
Okay.
I'm just asking how they would, it's not sponsored by the school. It's kids getting together, having a practice, just like if we got 10 kids that went down to play at a basketball game on a court.
All right. I think this is a conversation to have at a later time. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. That's something maybe that warrants further discussion. I know there are rules about a coach can't coach in the offseason for a certain group, but that doesn't mean that perhaps another adult couldn't be there to supervise, or that's something that just, we can discuss.
Well, just one quick example as far as that, like in passing leagues in football, okay? There's no pads. In captain's practice and things like that in football, there's no pads or anything like that. So in passing league, you could have an adult, like say, for example, someone's father or something, you know, supervise them as they're playing. You just can't have a coach that's on the staff doing that. That's illegal.
Yeah.
You know, in some, in some sports, you know, or coaches, you know, or kids don't choose to have captain's practice, that's their priority too. It's not something they have to do.
Right. And some kids just choose to get together unbeknownst to the district or the school or, you know, that sort of a thing.
Right, right.
So that's something that maybe warrants some further discussion down the road. But thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Appreciate you sticking around. Appreciate everybody sticking around.
Right. And I just have one last comment, and then I'll be done. And I just have one last comment and then I'll be done. I'm sorry if I spoke too long. It's just the parents out there who have students who play sports. I just want to kind of echo something here. Make sure that, you know, you tell your kids you're proud of them. Look at the lens of a kid. They go to school all day. They go from seven fifteen to two fifteen. They practice for two and a half hours. They come home, they grab something to eat. And if my math's correct, sometimes it's six, six thirty. They've been, you know, going at it for eleven hours in a day. So sometimes we, as parents, don't really look at the lens like that. But be proud of your kids, anyone who participates in extracurricular activity, and, you know, just tell the kids you're proud of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Very quickly, we've talked, there's be no report of the finance director tonight. Agenda item number eleven, report of the superintendent. Ms. Gardner?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I will be brief. We finished our interviews for our four principals' positions last night. Hopefully, at our next meeting, we will recognize those who served on the committee. We had volunteer teachers, community members, school committee members, administrators from the district. And I would like to say that it was a great experience. Our committees were incredibly professional. The teachers, the faculty members, the community members were the ones who voted for the candidates that we're moving forward. The facilitators, who are the district administrators, and the school committee members chose not to vote on who was being moved forward. And as I said, it was an incredibly professional experience that I was very, very proud to be a part of. Those names will be delivered to the superintendent in the next few days of the candidates who are being moved forward. And at that point, we will look at public forums and some other ways that we want to introduce our candidates to the community. But it was a great experience. We had some wonderful candidates, and we are moving forward the names of candidates who have had success in turnaround districts and who are eager to come to Southbridge. And again, I want to thank everyone. I wish tonight we had time to name everyone who served on those committees. For the sake of time, I'm not going to name them, but we will do that at a future meeting. And again, we look forward to having some forums where the public gets to come and take a look at the candidates who want to come and work with our students. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Under agenda item number twelve, school committee actions. I was going to ask if anybody wanted to take a break, but I actually think we should keep going, if nobody objects. Thank you. We're going to move agenda item D up before A, B, and C, seeing as we do have a guest this evening. This would be a vote to appoint Attorney Paige Tobin of Murphy, Lemire &amp; Murphy, P.C., as special education legal counsel for the district. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mrs. Quinney makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Congdon seconds the motion. Is there any discussion on the motion? Ms. Culligan will come up, the Director of Pupil Personnel Services, along with Attorney Tobin. Nice to meet you. Good evening.
I just wanted to do a brief introduction and talk about three particular areas in both student services and special education and why the district is in need of a special education lawyer. There are three areas in particular that I have encountered. We have not had a special education lawyer in Southbridge. So we have not been represented in areas in particular with Bureau of Special Education Appeals. During IEP processes, any parent can dispute processes and procedures. It is their right to do so and bring those to the Bureau of Special Education Appeals. We are getting much more sophisticated and complex in our special education law. We are having many more meetings in which parents are represented with lawyers, which is a wonderful thing, and advocates in order to ensure rights for the students. And so we need someone with some sophisticated understanding in particular for interpretation of the special education law. A second area that we have some great need in is administrative training at the administrative level for student discipline and discrimination issues in terms of how we are suspending and/or working with students through discipline issues. And a third area is in student services in terms of just working in individual cases of concern that go through both the student services and the special education appeals processes at a very high level. Oftentimes, they end up in state courts or other kinds of jurisdictions. And we have not had someone in the past that has been able to represent and, in my mind, also protect the district and help guide us and train us in the areas that we need in order to be effective and follow proper process and procedures at the outset, so that if we do have appeals and/or hearings that we go to, that we are following the proper procedures and we have folks that are trained in all aspects of special education. That has been my goal this year in terms of the professional development that we have put into place. The plan monitor spoke about it, working on how we go through all of our processes, all of the things that we need to do to represent our students and our families with disabilities and to do it in the right way. So Attorney Tobin, you should all have a prospectus that was provided to you in advance. Is a seasoned litigator. She has expertise in the fields that I have just spoken with you about. And I'm going to let her certainly speak and answer any questions that you might have. I think it's important to also be sure that you have a chance to look at the school districts that she has represented. And one of those is Mr. Nembrokeau, former District of Brockton. He is also familiar with her, so thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for having me here. I don't know if you would like me to just talk about our firm and talk about what I do, or if you've read it and just have questions.
Maybe a brief overview and then open it up.
Sure. Our firm, Murphy, Lemire, Murphy, has been in existence, I think, for over forty years now. And I've been practicing law for twenty-two years. My practice is solely now in the area of student services and special education. And I work with, I think, over thirty public school districts and some private schools in Massachusetts. What I like to do when I start to work with a district is really come in and do some training, and I would do that on a pro bono basis without charge to the district, some initial training to sort of, you know, talk about some of the areas that I've seen more litigation in terms of the Bureau of Special Education Appeals and the Office for Civil Rights, which in our state has been quite active recently. And just kind of getting everyone up to speed on what the current law is. I know right now, there's been significant changes in the discipline law that will be going into effect in July. So I do work with the districts again in terms of training. I do training in bullying and harassment and five oh four issues, and even in terms of athletic coaches. I know there's been a lot of discussion tonight, but, you know, I have seen a lot of cases where bullying happens in those unstructured areas. And so it is really important to have not only the teachers and the administrators trained, but also, you know, people that are supervising students in more unstructured settings such as coaches. So I do that sort of work, as well as helping to draft policies and protocols to address things like that.
Thank you. Anybody have questions? Mrs. Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have your prospectus in front of me, and I don't recall where your law office is located. Like, how far away are you from our district?
The law office is located in Braintree. I do represent, you know, I'm out here quite a bit. I have the privilege of representing Worcester Public Schools and Webster as well.
Okay.
So we come, and we don't charge for travel time, so it's the time that I'm here is the time that I'm charged for. So I'm in Braintree and I'm, again, but it's not a charge to you for the drive.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions? Do you have any questions? I'm sorry. Anything on the side? No? Well, that was quick. Sorry, we kept you waiting.
Oh, no, that's quite all right. It was really nice to hear about the district.
Oh, good.
From people that have been here, yeah, it was great.
We'll invite you back. May thirteenth, mark your calendar. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, I will ask for a roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mr. Olivo?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
And Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Five yes?
Thank you. The motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Look forward to working with you.
Me, too.
Maybe attending some of those trainings. Now, we'll move back onto the track for the agenda. Agenda item twelve A was a vote to approve the last day of school for the 2013-2014 school year, which will be June nineteenth, 2014. For public benefit, this will be a half-day of school. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mrs. Donovan makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Olivo seconded. He beat you to it. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we have a vote, please.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mr. Olivo?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Five yes?
Thank you. The motion carries. Agenda item twelve B, this is a vote to name Patricia Gardner, Acting Superintendent of Southbridge Public Schools through May fifth, 2014. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mrs. Quinney makes the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Donovan seconds the motion. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Congdon?
Do we have any idea when Superintendent Nembrokeau will be cleared to return from his medical leave?
Yes. The reason we're voting on this tonight is because he has been cleared to return on May fifth, 2014.
Thank you.
Thank you for that question. Any other? Nope. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Olivo?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Five yes?
Thank you. The motion carries. Congratulations, you're on the hot seat of the week. And agenda item twelve C, vote to adopt guidelines for presentations to the school committee. Just note, this is an adoption of a procedure, not a policy. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mrs. Quinney makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Donovan. Is there any discussion? For the public's benefit, these are guidelines for staff reports to the Southbridge School Committee, again, as recommended during our district governance project. They've been adapted from the Essential School Board Book, written by Ms. Walzer, but they are ours, and they will be to, just briefly, guidelines would include defining the issue or the question, and there are sub-questions under each of these, but for the sake of time, I'll just name the main ones. So define the issue or question, provide a brief overview or background information, provide recommendations, provide budget implications, provide a statement of impact, identify potential policy implications, plan a succinct time and explicit presentation. All presentations would be due to the superintendent's office two weeks prior to the actual presentation, and those are our recommended guidelines. Any other discussion? Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mr. Olivo?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Five yes?
Thank you. That motion carries, too. There's no unfinished business this evening. Under new business, the next regular school committee meeting will be held on Tuesday, May thirteenth, 2014, in council chambers. I'll now open it up for a member forum if there's anything anybody would like to state. Mr. Olivo?
I would just thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to congratulate the middle school cheerleading team for their accomplishments and their hard work. I would also like to thank the students of the student council who met with myself and Ms. Congdon and Ms. McLaughlin. I want you students to know that you are the voices of your school and your fellow classmates, so your input matters in making the school a better place and the ideas that you provide to us. I would also like to announce or speak on the Air Force Concert, the Heritage of America Band, that was put on, an incredible show that was well-attended. It was nice to see people from other communities in attendance, and it was a wonderful way to showcase our school, our middle high school. I thank you to Mr. Ted Bartlett for your efforts and for bringing this to our community and looking forward to seeing this in the future. Also, I would like to thank the Southbridge Police Department color guard and the officers who also worked that evening, and to Calvin Gonzalez, who also worked that evening. Just have a couple of other announcements. One of those is for the Time to Shine Talent Show, they are looking for volunteers to assist with registration at upcoming auditions, which take place tomorrow, April thirtieth, from three thirty to six. Even if you can give an hour, it would make a difference. The auditions will be held at twenty-five Colab in the auditorium. Now, that is open to the youth of this community, and it's a great opportunity for those youth to be able to showcase their talents. Would also like to announce that the Southbridge Elementary PTA proudly presents a seventh annual Father-Daughter Dance, A Night Under the Sea. That is Friday, May second, and is from six p.m. to eight p.m. at the old Southbridge High School, twenty-five Colab. Make this a date with your Little Mermaids, and they will never forget. And that's all I have. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Mrs. Congdon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to mention that tomorrow on Wednesday, the parent luncheon will be held at Eastford Road School for the kindergarten parents, so go join your kindergartner at lunch. And also, this Friday, at Charlton Street and West Street School will be the parent lunch. And again, I also wanted to thank Mr. Bartlett for, that concert was unbelievable, the Air Force Concert. It was really such a patriotic event. The concert was a lot of fun. I've never had the chance of attending a military concert like that, but it really, it was really an amazing event, and I really enjoyed it. It was nice to see members of the community, and it was just nice to see that auditorium used for that purpose. And it just brought hope that in the future, we can have events like that and bring the community together in that building and just promote town-wide community spirit. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Anything, ladies? Mrs. Quinney?
Thank you, Madam Chair.